I'm going to call the City Council of meeting to order for September the 3rd, 2013. Lisa, would you please call the row?
Kenyon?
Here.
Petty?
Here.
Tenet?
Here.
Schottmeyer?
Here.
Adam?
Here.
Long?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Marsh?
Here.
We join in the reciting the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, on the first order of business we have tonight is the consent agenda. Number one, approval of the August 20th, 2013, City Council Meeting minutes. Number two, 2013 Community Block Development Block Grant, a resolution approving a budget adjustment in a total amount of $46,209 recognizing a 2013 Community Development Block Grant revenue increase. Number three, Transportation Department Message Sign, a resolution approving a budget adjustment in the amount of $14,500 for the purchase of a portable changeable message sign for the Transportation Department. Number four, What My Eyes Have Seen Photography, resolution awarding RFP 13-12 and authorizing a contract with What My Eyes Have Seen Photography for the provision of Parks and Recreation Department Youth Soccer and Softball Team and Individual Photographs. Number five, Planet Footprint Utility Bill Management Software, a resolution approving a budget adjustment in total amount of $1,987 to allow purchase of Planet Footprint Utility Bill Management Software. Number six, bid number 13-36, Mahoney's Equipment LLC, a resolution awarding bid number 13-36 and authorizing the purchase of one 3T Equipment Prowler Easement Machine with Do Little Trailer from Mahoney's Equipment LLC of Arnold, Missouri in the amount of $48,536 for use by the Water and Sewer Division and approving a budget adjustment. Number seven, Ozark Regional Transit Bench and Transit Shelter Pads, resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with Ozark Regional Transit as a sub-grantee for a Federal Transit Administration grant in the amount of $154,315.08 to fund bench and transit shelter pads and sidewalks and approving a budget adjustment. We'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda's request.
So moved.
Second.
Lisa, would you please call the row?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tenet?
Yes.
Schottmeyer?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Okay, under unfinished business, number one, RZN 13-4410, 2468 North Crossover Road, Lindwood Estates. An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN 13-4410 for approximately 4.66 acres located at 2468 North Crossover Road from RSF2 residential single-family, two units per acre to NS Neighborhood Services subject to a bill of assurance. I'll entertain a motion to go to the third and final reading.
So moved.
We have a motion and second to go to the third and final reading. Lisa, would you please call the row?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tenet?
Yes.
Schottmeyer?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN 13-4410 for approximately four and two-thirds acres located at 2468 North Crossover Road from residential single-family, two units per acre to Neighborhood Services subject to a bill of assurances.
Chairman.
Mayor, Council, as you're aware, this property was originally requested to be rezoned from residential single-family, two units per acre to RO, which is our residential office zoning designation with a bill of assurance limiting the development to single-family homes and professional office. I believe at the last meeting you made an amendment, just as Mr. Williams read, to change that to Neighborhood Services designation with the same bill of assurance essentially limiting the use of the property to single-family homes and professional office uses. I included in your packet a staff memo giving our analysis, at least of this, the current zoning designation, it did not go through a full zoning review team review, but we did place a recommendation in your packet. We do not support the Neighborhood Services rezoning designation. We do feel like it would probably or likely result in a lower impact compared to the RO request, both in terms of building size and scale. The Neighborhood Services zoning designation does limit your building size to 2,000 to 3,000 square feet maximum while the RO designation does not. And we also believe it would reduce the potential for traffic volume because again, it's nature of the size of the building. However, we feel like just looking at one of our primary tools that we look at with any rezoning request, which is City Plan 2030 and our future land use map, this particular area, when we were reviewing it as part of both City Plan 2025 and the update a few years ago to 2030, we utilized what's called a transect concept, which is essentially an ordering system of land uses from anywhere from rural, which is the least intensive, up to very urban intensity. This particular, along Crossover Road, this particular arterial was planned to be developed with concentrating the mixture of uses and intensity at nodes, and those nodes were identified at Huntsville Road, Mission Boulevard, Joyce Boulevard, and Zion Road. That's in direct contrast to how we envisioned College Avenue, for instance, as more of a corridor development, more like a Main Street development type of scenario. And so we utilized both of these tools when we developed City Plan 2030 based on the context of that environment. In this particular case, we feel like introducing the Neighborhood Services and non-residential uses would not be the most appropriate use in this particular case, and it's not in the vicinity really of any of those nodes that were identified as more urban neighborhoods. The zoning does introduce a new non-residential zoning primarily and a building type in the middle of an established residential area. It also, as a concern, pulls future development or has the potential to pull future development or redevelopment and also infill opportunities away from those major intersections that we've identified. As you can imagine, any new development along a corridor, particularly along Crossover Road, will pull away the opportunity to develop in those areas that we're trying to incentivize for infill development at the nodes, and that reduces the capacity of those nodes then to redevelop more densely over time. This general character of the area we think is also different. It's unique in Fayetteville along a major arterial to have more of a rural or residential type character, and we felt that was a unique sense of place that we identified within our City Plan 2030 and felt that should be something that, it is established now, and we feel like it's something we should at least look to as we're making recommendations for future land use in the area. And then finally, being sensitive to the context of this corridor, the Neighborhood Services designation is a form-based zone, so it does require a building to be placed up closer to the street. While that's appropriate in a lot of our streets, it's not always appropriate along a lot of our roads, and there's a big difference between streets and roads. Roads really are trying to get you from place to place and usually at a larger volume and a higher speed. In this particular area, it's 45 to 50 miles per hour, so placing a building up next to the road in that particular case isn't always the best idea in terms of a planning tool. So in this particular case, for a variety of reasons, we did not feel that the Neighborhood Services or another form-based code would be appropriate on this particular property.
Okay, what questions do we have, Chairman, on this? Okay, we will hear from the public now. I assume the applicant would like to start off tonight, and please introduce yourself to the microphone. Now, here's the ground rules, everybody. Everybody gets one turn to microphone unless a council member brings you up, okay? Everybody with me on that? Okay. Keep your remarks to me and don't engage council member or another citizen. Okay, all right.
My name is Ben Israel. I live at 1501 Star Drive in Fayetteville, and I don't know that I have a lot else to say other than what we've always said, other than I'm questioning why the staff is so against this project. I don't know what else we could have done. In fact, we had a meeting last week. Jerry had surgery, but we did arrange a meeting with Andrew Garner, and he said there's nothing you can do to make us like it or make us want to approve it. And I thought, that's really a harsh statement. There's nothing you can do to make this acceptable, not even with a bill of assurance and with changing our recommendation or our desire to go to RO. But this started back in June, like late June. I got the equipment, I mean, the information that was needed to be completed and went through the 2030 plan as best I could as a layman and determined that, hey, this would really fit what the 2030 plan calls for. And so we designed the RO request and said, we believe that's the highest and best use for the owners of the property. They own the property, they have rights in the property, and it was our decision that that would be the highest and best return for them. And we got on the Planning Commission agenda, and it was going fairly well, and then one of the Planning Commissioners said, you know, this fits 2030 plan perfectly. It fits the 2030 plan perfectly, even though staff had recommended against it. And I was thinking, well, how does seven appointed people decide one way and the staff decide something totally different? So we've had a meeting with the staff, and after it was approved six to one by the Planning Commission, we said, okay, let's have a meeting with the staff and see what else we could do. What can we do? Let's set more tight regulations on what Jerry and Lynn want to do there. And we pointed out again, this is what 2030 calls for, but it kept coming back to, well, there's a future use plan that says this is going to be residential. If you visit Fayetteville in 2050, that will not be residential. We've had negotiations and discussions with staff a couple, three times and tried to figure out what we could do, and they didn't make the recommendation of going to Neighborhood Services. Mr. Petty did, suggested that that might be a better direction for us to go, and we were willing to do that. I thought if we're willing to do that, we don't need the bill of assurances, but y'all convinced us, several of you convinced us, that, well, let's keep the bill of assurance in place, and we did that. So I don't know why we have ordinances like 2030 if the staff is not going to follow or if the council is not going to follow someone who's followed the procedures and outlined their plan accordingly. What else could be overriding that? If you make a law, you ought to back it up. If you make an ordinance, you ought to say, yes, that's the ordinance, and you've met all the requirements. Or you should change the ordinance and say, if 75 people show up with a petition, then we're not going to let you do it. Or if, whatever, I mean, if you've got an ordinance, that's possible. So we would ask for your support tonight, and I really have nothing else to say.
Is there any questions for Mr. Israel? Okay, thank you. All right, who will be next?
My name is Dennis Bailey. I've sent you an email two weeks and two days ago about this issue, so you know where I stand. I wanted to be here so you would know who I am, and I vehemently oppose what Mr. Israel is saying. I was in here about a year ago when he was pushing for the rezoning of the property immediately north of this. And I guess my bottom line is, I'm tired of living in Fayetteville. I've been here 45 years, I have moved four times, and the reason for each move is because I found rezoning of neighboring properties from residential to some form of business or commercial and the consequent downturn that that meant for the neighborhood, additional traffic, uncertainty of who is in the neighborhood at any given time, and other problems. I have recently moved immediately across the street from this property that's under consideration, that was five years ago, and I've lived in fear of this kind of issue becoming, coming before the City Commission again. A year ago, when that property just north, and some of you have seen what that looks like now, it's a mess. A year ago, when that was being considered, Mr. Israel stood in this room and said that all property, let me recr- crap, he made a statement that Crossover Road is already a commercial strip from Mission north to Springdale. You know that's not the case. The Highway Department gives it a rural classification of one of their forms in the building of the road development through there. And I hope that I don't face this obstacle again in the next year or two of seeing right across the street where Shagbark connects with Crossover, immediately across the street, seeing business or commercial or office, other kinds of developments of that sort going in. It's to the point that I'm just ready to leave this town if it happens one more time. I'm frustrated, I'm angry about it, I'm tired of following Mr. Israel around dealing with these issues. I hope you will vote against this request. I hope sincerely that you will.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
I just have a quick question, if that's okay. And I hope you don't leave the city, by the way.
Who's speaking? I can't.
Me, I'm sorry. So I hope you don't leave the city, I'll say that. When, you live on Shagbark, is that right?
I live on Mockernut, which is the T, yes.
But you live in that subdivision. So is there, is there going to be a curb cut or is there going to be a median cut in front of your house or not? If you have to go to Springdale, how are you going to get there?
I'm going to have to go right to Township and either turn left and take Candlewood, and I'm sure that's going to make all those neighbors unhappy, or else go to the right again on Township and go Old Missouri Road. There's no other way to do it, once the Highway Department closes that, and they're going to close it in the next few days.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Hello, thank you for your time. I'm Paul Henry. I live at 2885 East Township. I live about 400 feet from the intersection of Township and Highway 265 with my wife and three children. I know firsthand how congested the intersection becomes each day. The congestion is caused by many factors. It is a major intersection because of many residential neighborhoods in this area. It's congested because Vandergriff Elementary School has decided to make this intersection the exclusive exit for all its traffic, both in the morning and in the afternoon. It has become a maximum, it must be at its maximum point because there are cars backed up all the way to Vandergriff twice a day. They're backed all the way up to the front of Vandergriff, which is a half a mile away, as the cars wait to get through the Township and 265 intersection. I would estimate this intersection has more children going through it than any other intersection in Northwest Arkansas. Safety at this intersection is paramount, important to our community. The traffic load is tremendous. The accident reports were pulled for the last two years, and 28 accidents were logged. Fifteen occurred in a four-hour time span between 8:15 and 8:30 and 2:30 to 4:00. So 53% of the accidents occurring at this accident occur in a school time zone. Mr. Jones is not presenting you with any discernible plans on how he intends to use the property. Allowing him to make any ambiguous modifications to zoning will not help our community. He does not offer you any discussion on whether safety is part of his long-range plan. By asking you to change the zoning without giving you all the details, he's not taking us in the direction of less traffic, but possibly more commercial traffic. He provided a plea at the last meeting about how the City of Russellville planned to put a post office in a residential area and how it thrived. The critical difference is that the planned development, as opposed to an open-ended zoning, changed without any clear plans. The City of Fayetteville has invested a great deal of time and money with the 2030 plan. Such a plan was designed to give our community a reasonable, long-range planning vision on how we as a community can balance development against safety and cost. The 2030 plan, I suspect, understands traffic load, school safety, and preservation of the residential investment. I'm not here to speculate on declining values, other than plainly observe how people with children place a premium on safety. I may have this wrong, but Mr. Williams, the city attorney, provided an idea about conditional uses, and my understanding was that the conditional use is falling out of vogue because it leaves the city. The city right now has a statute of zoning that was in place when Mr. Jones purchased the land and when he personally had the zone changed several years ago. He made the initial purchase, it was residential agriculture, and the subsequent change to RSF2. His current proposal of Neighborhood Services is an idea that is more suited for densely populated areas with lots of foot traffic, and I do not think it's in the best designation for this area. His zoning request is not supported by the city staff, it's not consistent with the 2030 plans. The neighbors do not support it, and I believe you had several different petitions come forward with quite a few different names. His plan lacks details, and as a result, we can only conclude that it will not make the conditions safer. We can only conclude the zoning change will increase the traffic load and already overburdened intersection. Mr. Israel's been in real estate. He's offered sweeping assurances over the last few meetings that nobody in the area cared, with only five people signing the original petition. Nobody mattered that signed some of the petition and that he'd given everyone the chance to talk and meet. It's not quite accurate, and it certainly doesn't reflect the true sentiment of the neighborhoods evidenced by the recent petitions. Thank you for voting against the proposal, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Henry. Who would be next?
Good evening. My name is John Walts. I'm a resident of the Candlewood subdivision, which of course is adjacent to the property of concern. I'm here on behalf of a number of my neighbors who couldn't make it, just to express our concern over the proposal. I don't want to repeat some of the things that were brought up around the 2030 plan, although very supportive of some of the concern that you brought up around it not meeting some of the zone guidelines. I'd repeat, or I guess I'd want to appeal to you on three different areas. One is just simple traffic flow of Crossover. As we all are aware of, the government is spending significant dollars, probably north of many millions, to accelerate traffic flow through the area. My concern would be this proposal would in fact go against that. So having now a four-lane highway, we're going to now open it up to more commercial use, my concern would be we're going against exactly what we planned to do in the first place by accelerating traffic flow. Second concern is just what the last gentleman said, is safety. I happen to live right at the corner of the entrance into the Candlewood subdivision, and I can tell you firsthand, as a father of a nine-year-old and six-year-old, I have to be out there at all times, given the amount of traffic that flows through there. Not just in the high school times around the, you know, returning from school as well as the beginning of the day, but especially in the evening as people return home from work and potentially cut through. We have a number of people that cut through the Candlewood subdivision to begin with to get to Covington Park area on given nights, and so my concern would be with an additional commercial zone just outside of our subdivision with no immediately obvious turning into, you know, if you're going south, I guess, on Crossover, there's not going to be a planned cutover. People could possibly have to cut into the Candlewood subdivision or make a U-turn or go downtownship, which as the last gentleman said, is already overcrowded, given the traffic going into Vandergriff, of which my children walk to school. The third piece, just ask you to consider is, if there's a desire on the city's part for more commercial avenues, that we look at to the other currently zoned areas, i.e. the Mission Marketplace as well as other up on Joyce, that we maximize all potential commercial uses that already exist, if there is a need for more commercial businesses. I would ask that this is not be zoned for that because there may not be a need if there's other opportunities elsewhere that don't impede upon the safety and the traffic flow of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would be next?
My name is Katie Cushman, and my husband, Arthur Brown, and I live at 2401 North Covington Park Boulevard, and I've lived there for a little over seven years. And I've noticed the traffic getting worse on Covington Park Boulevard as people are cutting through the neighborhood, and it's always been very bad in the morning and in the afternoon. In fact, it's almost impossible to get out of my driveway, but I've noticed more as people are cutting through Covington and then Candlewood. And sometimes, I used to cut through Candlewood, and I find it hard to actually get on Crossover, so now I use the traffic light because it's, you know, I know the flow of traffic works with the traffic light. So now that there's a new little addition down the road from Candlewood, there's just more traffic every day. And so I have noticed over the last seven years that the traffic has become worse, and I think that this idea is a very bad idea, especially with the cuts and the turning around and going through Candlewood or maybe doing a U-turn, which I don't even know if that's allowed, but that's what many people will do. So I just wanted to add that I would very much like this not to pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, who would be next?
Hello, Andrea Klaus. I live at 2649 Firewood Drive in Candlewood. This is Adelaide. I really wanted to come tonight to, you know, appeal to you guys to reject this. It's important enough to me to have Lisa come when I had to bring my child with me. Traffic is a concern, so in addition to what everyone has already highlighted, I have four kids, with my oldest being six, and we already have to call the police sometimes if people are going fast on our road. I just do have the concerns if truly, if you're going through this new business, well, you know, if you MapQuest it, is it going to give you the option to turn into Candlewood, then make a right on Firewood and come back out and make a right into this new business, you know? And then those are my kids who are playing in the front. And if you guys know, if you have children, that, you know, the two, the four-year-old, this one soon, it's difficult when the cars are coming fast down your street. I appreciate all the information people have shared, and I do agree that we have ample space in the designated nodes that we have, and would appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, who would be next? Anyone?
Hi, I'm Leslie Cameron. I live at 2733 East Mockernut, and, you know, I don't have a lot to add to all of these comments, I just want to say I'm coming in agreement with all of them and really do hope that you're going to listen to the voices of people that are here tonight opposing this. We have a lot of neighborhoods, not just Candlewood, not just Hickory Park, you know, there are a lot of neighborhood streets around there, and lots of young families, young kids. So, yeah, I really do hope that you'll vote against this. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jerry Jones. I live at 2468 North Crossover Road. I'm the owner that's proposing for the rechange of the rezoning. Boy, it was nice over where I live when it was 1996, boy, we had low traffic, but we didn't have any subdivisions out there either back in 1996. We had some coming on, I don't know exactly what the dates were when they come, but I remember the time when it was real slow on that side of town. You talk, you know, most people that's coming up tonight are concerned about the traffic congestion. You know, I think you could take a school and put it out in the middle of the desert, and at 3:00 in the afternoon, you're going to find traffic congestion. I mean, that's just the way it is, that's the reason that we're widening 265, to eliminate a lot of traffic congestion. You know, we've got, I've got You know, we've got, I've got 4.66 acres there. 1.25 of that is part of that 4.66 acres, which leaves about 2.5 acres or so, something like that, that I'm trying to rezone. So you're not talking about a lot of buildings that's going to be built on that property. And it's, I think I've outlined again, you know, through the Bill of Assurances, what we plan to do there. Again, you know, we're not trying to put something there that's going to be, you know, that the neighbors are going to dislike, you know? But we are going to have growth on that side of town. And back when my property was zoned agricultural, I decided to, you know, improve it, and I went through the cost of, you know, putting in water and sewer and all the improvements that it takes to do that. And it was very costly. And then when we decided to, or the council decided, or the state decided to widen that road, they took a certain percentage of the property, which is 50 feet. Well, that discouraged a lot of people from wanting to build a home on the highway. So I felt like for the best interest of my family was to try to, again, try to rezone it to something that, you know, that would be to our best interest, and certainly to not hurt anyone in the community. And that's still our intent, is to build something that would be, you know, nice for all concerned. But the idea, I keep talking about traffic and danger and all this kind of stuff. I mean, if you want to go to root school at 3:00 in the afternoon, you'll see probably 40 cars, and in each one of those cars will be one person. They're there to pick up their child. And that's one, that's one person picking up one or two children. But I mean, that's just the way it is. You're going up to Vandergriff, that's the same thing. You see cars parked, backed up, one person in those cars. That in itself creates a lot of congestion. But it's temporary. We all have to go through that. I mean, you're going to get, you know, people are going to go through Candlewood. Candlewood, when it was first put in, they complained about the traffic going through there. And I understand that problem that they had, because, I mean, it's an easy cut-through. And at one time, I believe, they even asked for the little, what do you call the little bumps in the roads, Mayor, what do you call them?
Speed bumps.
Speed bump. And I think they rejected that. They were, was in an attempt to, you know, discourage traffic from coming through there. But I think they decided not to do that. But, again, I can't believe that the planning, that the planning commission, well, let me back up there just a second. The planning commission had enough vision, in my opinion, that they see that this is part of the 2030 Plan. I mean, they saw it enough that they went over the planning, Jeremy paid, and decided to, because they felt like that it was worthy of trying to get this through. And I just can't believe that y'all are that far apart. I believe y'all believe that this is a good thing. At least, rise I'm hoping you will. I've got, you know, a large investment there. I guess people that's against this, I guess they'd just love to let me just sit there. I could just give that land away for nothing. But I don't think that they would do that if they were a property owner. I guess they just want to see that property just sit there. I mean, it's pretty. I keep it mowed and keep it picked up and everything. But I mean, I don't think there's anybody here, if you were in my shoes, what y'all would want to do. You know, you'd want to try to improve it and sell it and go on. And there's nothing going to be put on that property that, in my opinion, is going to be detrimental to the city of Fayetteville. Eventually, something's going to be put there. I don't know. But anyway, I really appreciate y'all's time, and it's a very important decision y'all are making tonight. And I hope y'all will see, as the planning commission sees, that this is a good thing, that we are in the 2030 Plan, and we're trying to put something there that would be favorable for everybody. So I really appreciate your time and appreciate your vote. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else want to address this? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council.
I have a question for Jeremy. Jeremy, someone mentioned, I think it might have been Mr. Israel, mentioned that this was, this did match the 2030 Plan, and you said earlier, I believe, that it did not match the 2030 Plan. The staff believe that this does not meet the 2030 Plans.
That's correct. To clarify, that the City Plan 2030 and future land use map, which is essentially, sure. To clarify that comment, the City Plan 2030 and future land use map, which is adopted as a singular document, is not an ordinance. It's a resolution adopted as policy by the council about how you view future land use development within the city. It's one tool utilized in zoning. You look at compatibility, you look at traffic, you look at a number of factors as part of any rezoning request. And so it is a matter of opinion at times. A planning commission sometimes does disagree with staff, as does the city council. We take that tool as part of the policy you all have adopted and attempt to apply it to each and every rezoning application that comes before us. And so in this particular case, we've applied it to this property, and we simply don't agree with Mr. Israel that it does comply with that City Plan 2030. In terms of the RO zoning, obviously, the planning commission disagreed, as Mr. Israel mentioned, with a 6 to 1 to vote, and they made that recommendation to you all. So you essentially have a split recommendation coming from staff and the planning commission, with that regard.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, anybody?
Well, I just wanted to say again why I approached the applicant to do neighborhood services instead of residential office. You know, I probably wouldn't have voted the way the planning commission did with residential office, but I think I would have supported it with neighborhood services. And the reason is, you know, almost all the comments we've heard tonight have been about the potential for the property to go commercial, which I think all of us, well, at least speaking for myself, I would have some concerns about. But neighborhood services, because of the Bill of Assurance requires, if they have a commercial proposal for it to come back through to the planning commission, with an opportunity to put conditions of approval. Now, I know that the city attorney cautioned us last meeting that conditions of approval are weaker now than they weren't, than they once were in the past. Well, that doesn't mean they're useless, and it doesn't mean that they aren't valuable or that they can't be enforced. It just means that the community that enacts them is going to be held to a higher standard than they were in the past. And that's fine. It's important for us to be held to higher standards whenever we assign conditions of approval on zoning. So that's why I brought it forward. I thought it was a good middle way. It allowed the property owner to get one step closer if they want to do something commercial. Still allows them to do single-family development, which we haven't heard, at least in everything I've read, any opposition to. So I thought it was a good middle way. Now, as far as the future land use map, I have to thank staff tonight for explaining what a transect is and describing in detail how they use the transect logic to design the future land use map. But I have to say, it's the first time I've ever heard that explanation given in a public meeting, and I'd love to see the next update we see transects on the map, because I think that is what leads to a lot of the ambiguity about this. Oh, and as far as nodal development goes, I think that logic is also very correct. I think the disagreement I might have with staff is I think township and crossover should be a site for smaller-scale nodal development than what we see on crossover and mission, but nevertheless, some sort of nodal development.
Okay, Jess.
I'm going to do two things tonight that I've never done, and two things that I don't like doing. One is telling a landowner that he or she cannot sell their property the way they want to sell it. I've been on record, going back to the sale barn and before that and after that, saying that a government should be very careful in telling someone what they can and can't do with their private property when they pay their taxes, when they do everything under the law. And I think this landowner has done everything that he can do to get this done. So the second thing that I'm going to be doing tonight, that I've always talked about not doing, is overturning some of our committees and commissions that we have. I've said before out loud, why do we have these commissions and committees? They put their effort into talking about a situation, and then who are we to overturn But the fact of the matter is, the planning commission got this wrong. I watched the tape. They seemed to rush through their decision-making. They didn't do their due diligence, I don't think. Saying that something fits the 2030 Plan is like taking a map of Fayetteville, taking something that fits the 2030 Plan, throwing it up in the air, and wherever it hits, going, well, it's got to fit, because it fits the 2030 Plan. So it doesn't matter where it landed on that map. It absolutely matters where it lands on the map. And it absolutely matters that it doesn't fit every section of the city, and what Jeremy said is exactly right. It is a guiding item that we have, but it's not an ordinance, and it's not a law. The idea of nodes, I think, is a great example of what 265 and how it should stay. When you start at 16 and you turn on 265, you've got commercial development. And it's all, well, there's all space for lease in some of those places, but it's all there. And then you have residential. And then you have a school, which has plenty of room for traffic in and out. And then you go up, and then you have the big intersection at crossover and 265. And there's a collection of commercial property, with property for rent, I might add. And then you go from there north, and you see more residential. And you go past the 265 and township area, and you get down to the next big intersection, and there you have a pod of commercial or a node. And then you go down to Zion, and then you have another one. And in between there is very good separation, in my opinion, of commercial and residential. It keeps the character of 265 together. Even though this thoroughfare that is going through there right now, I don't agree with the way it's built. And maybe that's my fault for not chiming up when we had the opportunity to talk about it. But this eight-foot-wide or 10-foot-wide concrete thing in the middle of it, going up the whole way, that no one's ever going to step foot on, in my opinion, shouldn't have been built. I think we should have had a lot more cuts for the neighborhoods to go across so that they don't have to turn right, like Mr. Bailey has to do, go up and turn around, or take exits, or cut through Candlewood, or what have you. I don't think it was planned right, but it's finished. But the fact of the matter is, people are going to have to go down and make U-turns at random places. But we are going to have a nice road, but we still need to keep the character of 265. It doesn't have to become a commercial pocket-lined street. I think it could become North College if we're not careful. And I think everybody up here would have loved to stop North College from looking like it looks today. The land north, immediately north of this, was brought up. Well, we rezoned that. Well, yeah, we did rezone the land immediately north of this property. But that property, you can't build very much residential on that. I don't think it's deep enough. And I actually saw a reason for possibly something very small right there, because nothing's going to be built there, I don't think, residentially. This, on the other hand, you've got 150-foot deep lots, possibly 200 to 40, 260-foot deep. And the idea that 265 widening has diminished the saleability of this property, that's an issue for the landowner and the highway department when they bought the land in the first place. You can't go back now and go, well, it wasn't good enough at the time, so we want to rezone it. And if this helped walkability in any way, I live in the area, if this helped walkability, because I've said it several times, we need to create walkable areas to Gully Park from east Fayetteville, because there's really not any. We need to create another park over there somewhere that's on the other side of 265, in my opinion. And if this helped walkability, if this promoted some walkable place where people could go use a place of services, whatever that might be, on a daily basis, then I might change my mind. But I've never sat around my house and said, you know, I'm going to take a quick walk up to where the lawyer's offices are, and that'll be my walk for the day. You don't do that. And the places that would be good for a walkable area, we've already said we don't want there anyway. We don't want gas stations, we don't want stores, and we don't want markets and things like that. So the things that can be built there are not necessarily needed for a walkable area. If we rezone this tonight, I believe we're forcing it. We're saying, well, we have to rezone it, because we need to rezone. Well, we don't need to rezone. Now, I've said before, if I was forced to rezone, then I would do exactly what Alderman Petty said. I think it's a much better idea. I think that kind of control, coming back to what's there individually, is a great idea, and I commend him for it. It just doesn't fit here. There's a school worry. And I can tell you that the teachers, the administration, a lot of people are saying, you know, I think Dr. Henry said, it's one-way now out of Vandergriff and into Vandergriff, not just at 745 and 3, but they don't want people going except one way down from 45 and one way out through township, all day. And believe me, I'm there during the day sometimes, and there's still traffic coming out of there. It's two huge overcrowded schools, well, I guess they're not as overcrowded as they used to be, but they're still crowded. And it's not going to get any better. And the idea of having people all going up township at the end of the day, and having people do U-turns in front of them to go to the law officer, the chiropractor, or whatever it is, is not a good idea. And I do think that this can be sold as residential. I'm no real estate agent. I've talked to a couple who have said, market's back, probably can still sell that as residential. It's deep enough. Half-acre to three-quarter-acre lots to put a big estate home on? Yeah, give me a shot at selling it. I went to the other sections of the city, and I went to every elementary school in town, and I can't find a place similar to this situation. And if you think about all the elementary schools, and maybe I missed one, Leverett is amongst the universities, so of course there's commercial within a few, however many feet of that. But you look at a lot of the other schools, and it's residential, and it's not, we're not packing commercial right next to them, or right near them. We're just not, in any place in the city. And so I don't want this area to be a guinea pig for a new zoning classification that we've never tried. But to rezone this, just to rezone, if it doesn't fit, it doesn't fit. It doesn't matter what plan it is. The bottom line is, planning commission made a mistake, and we need to fix it. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
I'm in total agreement with Alderman Tennant. I'm personally disappointed that this has come this far. I had an idea, it was a bad idea, before we made a site visit. Once we made the site visit, there's no doubt in my mind that it's a bad idea. It's a bad idea for Ward 3, and it's certainly a bad idea for the city of Fayetteville. I don't understand why we want to go against the city in this 2030 Plan. I'm in full agreement with Justin that this planning commission got it wrong. And it's about the safety of young children going to school every day. Those are big schools, and there's a lot of traffic. And I don't think we need to increase the burden for those young children going to school every day. Y'all have been through proverbial heck anyway with the road being redone, and now you're going to have to make a right-hand turn and make a left-hand turn eventually, and vice versa. I just think this is a bad idea, and I'd like to vote against it. Thank you.
Well, this has been a really difficult decision for me, as a big proponent of density and mixed-use development. And while I never would have supported the residential office designation, I'll admit that I was a little more attracted to neighborhood services, thinking it might be more conducive to creating a walkable neighborhood, you know, by permitting such uses as a neighborhood coffee shop, daycare, a corner store. But the Bill of Assurance prohibits all of those things. So I tried to envision what I would like to go there, and ultimately, I came up with nothing. And I know that that's not a great thing for the landowner to want to hear, but, you know, we've been building this box around the city with the intent that it's going to be an urban growth boundary. And so I don't think that development along that strip is inevitable. And, you know, I would really like to see us hold to that box around the city as an urban growth boundary. And while we certainly need to support existing commercial developments outside that box, I'm not sure that I would really want to see any new commercial development outside of that box. So that's why I'm also going to agree with Alderman Tennant and Alderman Schottmeyer and not support this.
Okay. Mark?
I think if we look at the historical activity in some of the older sections of town, especially in Ward 2, where I live, you can see what type of pressure comes into neighborhoods when you have... neighborhoods when you have the encroachment of a, a commercial rezoning into an established neighborhood. What I see evident here is a well-established neighborhood, a neighborhood that has an identity, a neighborhood that has a community, a neighborhood that has a heart and they know what they want in their neighborhood and they want to protect it. We see this all throughout the city in our neighborhoods. And as Dr. Bailey said, it's hard to be chased from one location to another because you buy a place because you love the neighborhood, then the zoning has changed and the integrity of the neighborhood then changes. And what we have here is the opportunity, at least for a while, to take a look at the development of this neighborhood as a community and a community of neighbors that have an identity. And they expect this to be residential as it was residential when they purchased their homes in this area. So I will not be supporting this because I, I think that at this time, we can easily identify this as an established neighborhood area, a neighborhood that is a community of neighbors and the neighbors do not wish to have commercial development in the heart of their neighborhood. There's going to be a lot of changes when we see the traffic change coming up and down 265. It's not that this can't be revisited in the future if we somehow have an idea to have a, an a more urban center, but it's certainly not there now. So I'm not going to support this. I think that traditionally I've always looked at the neighbors in the neighborhood. They know what they want in their neighborhood. They know how they feel about their neighbors. They want to protect the identity that they have in their community, in their neighborhood. And that's why I think that at this time, this is zoned residential. And when you look at rezoning property, that is a big decision, a big decision. And so I would not vote to rezone this.
Okay. Adela?
Well, I too live in this area and we certainly don't need to do anything to increase traffic. I hear what Mr. Jones and Mr. Israel are saying, that there's not gonna be a huge number of places and so maybe traffic won't be increased a great deal. But I have another big concern and that is, as has been mentioned, we have a lot of empty storefronts in the area. Market, up by Neighborhood Market, Walmart, at Township and Mission. Many open storefronts there right now that could be used for exactly the thing that Mr. Jones is saying he would like to put on that property. So that doesn't seem like that's a very wise decision to me to put in many more businesses that, when we have open storefronts presently. I'm generally one that tends to feel, I'm kinda like Alderman Tennant, I'm doing something that's against what I like to do. And that is, I generally like to say, you know, if I don't own it, I can't control it. But this is, this is somewhat different. It is different. We have many neighbors here who have established homes in that area and they've asked to, that we respect their wishes and keep this neighborhood. And so that's what I'll be voting to do. Thank you.
Okay. Row.
I'll make it quick. I would have liked to have seen the applicant bring forth a PCD. I, when I go in the council, start learning a little bit about planned zoning districts. And I tend to think that when you bring something to us and in respecting your property rights and what you might like to do to change it, when, this is a very, seems to me, very knowledgeable neighborhood, very reasonable neighborhood, really nice people who would maybe have listened to something that was, here's what I wanna do. Here's exactly what it will look like. Here's exactly where the, where the cuts would be, where the driveway would be, how the traffic would flow and exactly what will happen here. Then let the neighborhood have input and then let the council vote on what it is. I think what I've heard from a lot of us is, what do you wanna do? And so, again, I think we need to have a very compelling reason to change zoning. Zoning is, is there for safeguard for the neighborhood and to protect people who bought their property with some assurances in place. And, and I, I wish you would have brought forth a PCD so we could have more carefully, we could have carefully considered exactly what you wanna do. So I won't be supporting the request to change either.
Anybody else? Okay. All right. Lisa, you please call her up. Now, this is to support or-
Shall the ordinance pass?
Shall the ordinance pass? Make sure I got this-
Canion?
No.
Patty?
Yes.
Tennant?
No.
Schottmeyer?
No.
Adams?
No.
Long?
No.
Gray?
No.
Marsh?
No.
Okay.
So the ordinance fails until the land remains zoned as it is right now.
Okay. All right, moving on to new business. Okay, y'all.
Mr. Mayor, do you think this, can I make a comment?
Ms. Jones, we've really closed the public comment list. Norman brings you back up. Okay, y'all. Let's move on to new business. All right. Okay. Under new business, number one, 72.73 Regulation of Wheel Clamps or Booting. An ordinance enacts 72.73 Regulation of Wheel Clamps or Booting on private pay-to-park lots within the entertainment district parking zone and the downtown business parking district zone into the, to the Fayetteville Code. Kuh?
Yep. Whereas numerous Fayetteville citizens and visitors have complained about the excessive charges, unprofessional conduct, and lack of adequate signage to warn parkers that their vehicles would be booted if parked overtime in some private pay-to-park lots within the Fayetteville Entertainment District and the Downtown Business Parking District Zone. And whereas excessive booting fees charged with insufficient notice has damaged Fayetteville's reputation as a fun and welcoming place to visit and enjoy our great restaurants and nightlife. And whereas Mayor Lionel Jordan and his staff requested State Representative David Whitaker to sponsor an act whereby the city of Fayetteville be power and authority to regulate the use of wheel clamps, also known as boots, in order to ensure the use of such wheel clamps would not be oppressive, unfair, or surprising to vehicle owners who choose to pa- park in private pay-to-park lots. And whereas the Fayetteville City Council has determined that reasonable regulations of private pay-to-park lots, use of wheel clamps is necessary to preserve and improve the peace, welfare, and safety of its citizens and visitors and the economic well-being of downtown and Dixon Street Improvement District, Entertainment District, excuse me. Now therefore be ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby enact Section 72.73 Regulation of Wheel Clamps or Booting on private pay-to-park lots within the Entertainment District Parking Zone and the Downtown Business Parking District Zone into the Fayetteville Code as shown on, as Exhibit A attached here to and made a park hereof. Mayor, as you know, this has been a long time coming. We have struggled with problems on the private pay-to-park lots, the entertainment district, for many years. The initial problems really had to do with towing. The legislature had to enact a couple of different laws. One of them was sponsored by Lindsay Smith when she was down there. And finally, they gave us the power to enact towing, non-consensual towing regulations, which the city council did, and basically solved most of the problems we had had with towing. As you remember back before this, not only would the people be facing at least $100 or more for non-consensual tow off from these private pay-to-park lots, but oftentimes the car would end up in a place as far away as, as P Ridge and other places. And they would not only have to pay the towing costs, but the extra costs for towing it so far and then, sir, and costs for it to be stored there. There were many problems. So we got that resolved a few years ago by regulating the parking, or the towing, rather, with, in the district. And then, kinda to our chagrin, I guess, the private pay-to-park lots turned to wheel clamping. And wheel clamping, they certainly need some rea-, some way to enforce overparking. They can't write tickets like the city can. But the problem was, again, with wheel clamps, they were charging people over $100 to remove the wheel clamps. And there were problems with the signs not really being very adequate to really properly warn the parkers that that's what was gonna happen, especially, I don't think any of the signs ever mentioned that the wheel clamping removal fee was gonna be over $100. And so, again, the city decided, the city administration under Mayor Lionel Jordan asked our representatives for help so that we could have authority under state law to regulate wheel clamps. And fortunately, this last year, Representative David Whitaker and Senator Lindsay and our other members of our delegation did get this statute passed, which has just become effective, in giving us the power to regulate wheel clamps. So I prepared an, an ordinance to do that, a new section of our code. The Ordinance Review Committee heard this and felt like there was one area, one part, pay-to-parking lot that was not being covered within the entertainment district. It's in the business, downtown business parking district. And so the Ordinance Review Committee wanted it extended to cover that lot. And in fact, that lot had had several complaints. And I think we're still getting complaints from the wheel clamps that are still being unregulated. And so we extended the, this ordinance which originally had only for the downtown entertainment district, extended it to also include the downtown business district so that it would cover all of the pay-to-park lots that we've had complaints from. What this would do would be limit the fee, that's one of the most important things of this ordinance, to $40. And there's been some question about, well, how did I come up with $40 that I had recommended? I, I came up with that because when we did the towing ordinance, the limiting, the towing fees, we actually did a survey of towing companies about what they would charge for non-consensual tows. And the general amount of revenue that they charged was in the $45 to $50 range. We felt like maybe it was more difficult with a non-consensual tow, so we said $60 would be something that'd be fair. We don't wanna try to put anybody out of business, but we wanted to be fair to our visitors also. When I looked at that with a $60 for the non-consensual tow limitation fee, it obviously takes much less capital or time to put a wheel clamp on and take a wheel clamp off than it does to call your tow truck in and tow that vehicle to your lot. It also requires much more capital investment by the company. Not only do they have to have the tow truck, they have to have a lot. And the lot has to meet all the standards that we require in our towing ordinance. So it's a much more expensive proposition for them to have to tow a vehicle. So I felt $40 might be good. It also kinda tracks with our pay-to-park lots. If somebody overparks on one of our pay-to-park lots, it's a $15 fine. However, if they don't pay the fine within about 30 days or so, then a warrant fee can be added on to that, which is another $25, so that their fee would be $40 if they don't pay on time. So that's how I came up with $40. I feel like that's a relatively fair amount, but of course it's up to the city council to determine exactly what you feel like is a proper amount. With that said, the Ordinance Review Committee also have made some other recommendations that I followed, requiring IDs and uniforms for the employees, which makes a good idea. It required, also, we put a time limit on when the employees must respond and have the wheel clamps off 15 minutes so that if somebody's overparked and you're sitting there waiting to get your car, well, we don't want them to be overtime and punish you for being overtime. So they must respond and get the wheel clamp off 15 minutes after they are paid. So it required them to answer their phone, like the tow companies, 24 hours a day, as long as they have a vehicle that's clamped within their lot. So that is what I have proposed with some of the recommendations, most of the recommendations from the Ordinance Review Committee. And that is what is before you now. I also think that David Jurgens is here who's overparking and probably can provide some more detail about the complaints that we have received through the years that motivated the city administration and myself to seek to find some solution to this.
Thank you, Kent. David?
The majority of the complaints, over 90% of the complaints that we receive about parking in our entertainment district relate to booting and non-city-owned parking lots. We've provided you a sample of the emails that we receive complaining about the issue and we find very common trends relating to booting. Most of the complaints that we get are telephonic and so, you know, we were not able to provide the telephonic complaints because we don't keep a, a log or a record of those complaints. Truly, we receive very, very few complaints about city-owned lots and how they are managed. But we receive weekly complaints about booting lots. So that's why we provided the information to you. We have received some complaints about the lot on Mountain Street as well as complaints downtown or in the, in the entertainment district. All of the majority relate to the entertainment district. We've provided that information basically for background. Other than that, I'm, I'm prepared to answer any questions you may have.
Mayor, I just wanna make a quick comment on that. We gave you a sampling of the complaints. This is not only the documented ones. These are ones that give you ideas of the things that have been brought to our attention that are representative of many more complaints. So what I didn't want someone to think when we say we don't document every phone call, we don't. But we have many, many more emails like this. For those of you who have a piece of paper detached and then, I think there's four of you that might have had it actually stapled in your back, it's simply because it's a complaint that came in today from this weekend, as an example of another one where maybe the discretion within the operation of the lot that handled. And so this, this happens pretty much every time we have an event. I would say that one criticism that we're trying to resolve relates to the city lots is just signage that is clear that it's a city-operated lot that doesn't tow or boot. Because that's probably the one consistent thing is, when do we know we're in a private-to-pay lot and when we're in a city lot? We have city signage with our city font, but we also have lots that put signs out that say "public parking," even though it might be a private parking lot. And so sometimes people think that that's a city lot. So we're trying to continue to address that. But I think you'll see in this list, representation of the kinds of things like, we didn't know who we were talking to, long responses, lack of response to phone numbers that are posted, in some cases, no posting. And so I just wanted to make that clear as David talked about it.
Mr. Mayor, I forgot-
I think that detail was talked about at ordinance review.
I did forget about one of the most important parts of the ordinance, which is actually what Chief of Staff Mar was talking about. We do require a sign, a specific sign. The very top of the sign says, "private pay-to-park lot." It talks about if you overpark here, your car can be booted and they can charge up to $40. So one of the problems we had is that people really didn't often know, didn't know it was not a city lot. And that's why we got a lot of calls saying, how come you booted my car? Because it said, it talked about Fayetteville lot. And though it was not a city Fayetteville lot, but it, some people evidently did not understand it. And I could under, you know, because of the sign, I could understand it. So any lot now that will either tow or use wheel clamps to enforce their overparking, which they still can do, they must have this sign up that the very top lines has "private pay-to-park lot." It's spelled out in the ordinance so that there hopefully will be no more confusion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If I may, the one thing that wasn't included in the ordinance that we did discuss at Ordinance Review Committee that I feel is important to point out is that Ordinance Review Committee would like to add background checks to this ordinance so that people that have their cars booted at 2:00 AM know that the person coming to their car to remove the boot is not a person that could cause them harm.
Okay, so I assume this is amendment that you wanna add to it?
Yes, we would like to add an amendment to the ordinance requiring a background check for the person removing the boot at the expense of the company that is doing the booting.
Now, did you want that identical with the solicitation, door-to-door salesman solicitation as was told to me? Because I have that already prepared under the Ordinance Review Committee's recommendation under subsection G, which would be adding a new G. It goes on quite a while because it does require lots of things. But is that, was that your intent to have it exactly the same as solicitation ordinance?
That was the intent.
And the reason I did not include that in my- And the reason I did not include that in my proposal is that we have no such requirement for tow companies now. We don't have, in fact, the regulation that we put on the door-to-door solicitation is more stringent and restrictive than any other restrictions that we have. People coming up to your door, we felt, or I felt, was more dangerous situation than leaving your car at a parking lot. It's more restrictive than what we have for taxi cab drivers and other people like this we do require some background check for. But of course, it's up to the city council. You can certainly have that kind of restriction if you want to.
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor, may I add one comment, just if that does become the amendment? That we would like in G, section G, in the very last sentence, for it to say, provided the following to the Parking Department, because this particular requirement planning has nothing to do with the, this item, and this would be the Parking Division that would be dealing with it. And that would be the only difference between the solicitation versus, they do the solicitation permits in plan.
Okay, let me get this straight. So we want to put an amendment?
And if I-
And for a background check for person or employee removing boot, and we want to add it to be under the Parking Division's jurisdiction, correct?
Yes, and if I can clarify-
Yes.
At Ordinance Review Committee, we also stated that in order to make these, the tow and booting ordinance is match, ordinance review would then be reviewing the towing ordinance shortly, within the next few months after doing this, so that we can make them match more closely. And to Kit's point, you know, that we don't regulate taxi cab drivers, well, people are getting in the taxi cab of their own pre-will, they're not being booted consensually, so.
Do you want to put that in the amendment as well?
No, I don't. I just, I just wanted to make sure that was pointed out, that, you know, there's a, there is a difference. So I'll make that a motion to add that amendment.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to add background checks for person or employee removing the boot, and we want to add it to the jurisdiction of the Parking Division. Is that about close enough?
Well, yes, they got it in front of them in page fourteen and fifteen, what the only change, changing the Planning Department to Parking Division.
Okay. So let's stay with the amendment first, all right? Okay, everybody good with that? All right. Now, we'll take public comment, and folks, stay with the amendment on the background check this time. Once it's amended, then we'll come back and talk about the overall ordinance, okay? Everybody gets one turn into microphone unless an alderman brings you back up or wants to ask you questions, okay? Keep your remarks to the chair, don't engage an alderman or another citizen. Now, let's stay with the amendment right now, okay? Anybody want to talk about the amendment? Okay, I'll bring you back to the council. All right, council, any discussion among yourselves?
Well, I think it's a fine idea. I think, you know, reasons are pretty obvious, but I won't be able to support it unless it includes an exemption for nonviolent offenders. I don't think people with a boot on their car have anything to fear from someone who's committed a nonviolent offense, and anybody who's making an honest effort in that circumstance to correct the wrongs they did in the past deserves a second chance. So I'd second that if somebody wants to make that a motion, but otherwise, I can't vote for it.
Wait a minute.
Are you moving to amend the amendment, Dan?
I haven't made a motion, though.
That was the discussion at the Ordinance Review Committee, it was nonviolent offenders. I'm sorry, I should have clarified that more.
The language that was discussed, that's been presented, says anyone who's committed any felony.
Any felony.
Okay, well, it's, it's okay, we can back it up here.
On point three, I guess this is page one forty-one in our staff, it says, employees has not, within the preceding five years, been convicted of any felonies or in any misdemeanors involving theft, sexual violence, or sexual offense or violence. And I would be okay with removing theft. I think, I mean, my primary concern is, you know, if I leave an establishment on Dixon Street at closing time, and there's somebody with a sexual offense, holding my car hostage with a boot, you know, that's, that's a situation that nobody wants to find themselves in. So, you know, I'm not so much concerned about theft, but it's really those sexual offenses that I think most people would be concerned about.
Yes, Matthew?
I guess we need to clarify from the city attorney, because I read that as "any felonies, comma, or any misdemeanors involving what you said."
That's exactly correct.
I think people who committed a theft shouldn't be in this position, you know?
Well, what do y'all want to do here?
Could you clarify where we are?
Well, I have an amendment here that says background checks for person or-
Considering about the background checks to make it almost identical to the background checks we have for home solicitation.
So I heard an amendment made by Alderman Long.
That's the amendment.
But it's already in here.
What?
So it's already in the order.
No, no.
No, it's not.
If that's, if you look at fifteen to sixteen, it says, "Ordinance Review Committee's recommendation," it's not exhibit A, which was my recommendation.
It's a recommenda-, okay. So you're looking, Matthew, what are you looking for?
I will vote for the amendment if, if it exempts people who have committed a nonviolent felony, because I think that if they're making an honest effort to better themselves, they deserve a second chance, and this is a fine job.
So we just want to say, any convicted of any felony, of, that is, any violent felony?
That would be fine with me. And I, you know, I'd second that motion if somebody made it.
I'll change my motion for the wording to say, "proceeding five years has been, proceeding five years been convicted of any violent felonies."
Okay. You want to read that back to me, Kit?
Okay, a signed statement under wrote that the person applying to be a wheel clamp company employee has not been convicted of a violent felony, that's under three, and then down here, you talk about it again, we'll talk about also being convicted of violent felony. And do you want to keep within five years, or?
I'm fine.
And what about a sexual felony?
Well, I consider that to be violent.
Well, we listed as two different things, so to be clear, I would have them both in there.
My motion didn't include any other language changing, except adding violent to in front of felony.
Well, that means, that could very well mean that somebody was convicted of a felony sexual crime, they would be okay, somebody convicted of a misdemeanor sexual crime would not be allowed. So that, we need to make it a little bit more consistent.
Yeah.
Do you have a recommendation?
Yeah.
Well, if you want to limit this, you could just say, "Has not been convicted of felonies involving sexual offenses or violence." Sexual, I mean felonies or misdemeanors involving sexual offenses or violence.
That works. I'll make that my motion.
I'll second that.
Well, I need to get this all written down. Any felonies-
You could just make that as a friendly amendment to your own amendment, if you want to. And I guess the Parking Division's also a friendly amendment to the same one?
We're all friendly people around here. Is everybody good? Okay. All right. What sort of discussion do we have on the amendment? Everybody good? All right. Now, we're voting on the amendment first. All right. Lisa, would you please call the vote?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Tenet?
Yes.
Schottmeyer?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Okay, now we have the amended ordinance on the regulation of wheel clamps or booting. Do we have any public comment on that? Same rules apply. Okay? Please introduce yourself, please.
My name is Pam Christian. I live in Lincoln, Arkansas, and I am an employee of Hawkeye Parking Enforcement that monitors the East Square parking lot, the Depot lot, and the campus bookstore lot. What you see me in today is what we wear in these parking lots. We have name tags, we have uniform shirts with the logo on it. The newspaper and the media have been reporting that people have to pay with cash only. That's incorrect. We take cash, debit, or credit, and the people get receipts for every one of these with addresses of the company that we work for. I know there are complaints. We get complained to every night and every day that we work. But in the Depot parking lot, there are one hundred and fifty-four parking spaces, and there are forty-one visible no-free parking signs that state your vehicle will be booted for a minimum of one hundred dollars. But yet, people, every time we boot them, they'll say, "We didn't see the sign," and they'll be parked directly in front of the sign. A lot of the confusion with these parking lots is, apparently, there was a statement made on the news about parking was free until two. Well, that people think it's free in all the private lots until two as well. The complaints that you get are from the people that their cars have been booted, and ninety-nine percent of those people are the people that did not pay to park. Very few of the people that get booted are the ones that have been expired, because we actually give a grace period of anywhere from thirty minutes to an hour, because we do know that special events go on on Dixon Street, and I don't expect anyone to leave an event to come and renew parking. So they are given a grace period. What you don't hear, though, is, there are two of us that do this, and we are the only two that does it. I do it during the day and at night, on the weekend, and the lady that's with me does it at night. But what you don't hear is how we spend forty-five minutes standing at booths, at the pay booth, helping people trying to pay, because they're not sure how to do the machines. Or what you don't hear is how people didn't get booted because they paid for the wrong spot. But when we run our reports, it shows that the spot they're parked in was not paid for. But yet, they produce a receipt showing that they did pay, even though it's for the wrong spot, and that boot gets removed. What you also don't hear is, if someone gets booted and they, for whatever reason, cannot come up with the money, that fine is also reduced, okay? We're not hardcore people up here. I mean, we don't just, you know, rate people across the coals for a hundred, a hundred dollars on the boot, you know? We're, we work for a living, too. I know how hard the hundred dollars is to come by. As far as how long it takes us to respond, when we boot a vehicle, we are in that parking lot. And I'm sure most of you are very familiar with Depot Parking Lot. We park right there in the parking lot. When we boot a vehicle, we can pretty much see the people when they walk out to their car. I'm not going to sit in my truck for thirty minutes while the people are standing at their car, waiting for someone to come and release their, their vehicle. So whatever it is that you hear about how long it's taken us, that's incorrect. It's angry people that have been booted, is what it is. And you actually have those people that get booted and apologize, because they didn't read the sign when they got out of the car. I'm sure you haven't heard from those people, though, that have no problem paying the fines because they know they were in the wrong. We tell people about the city parking across the street when we're trying to help them pay at the booth, so they have the option to go over there. They know what, what takes place in the private lots. When they're paying on the machine, it tells you, "Your vehicle will be booted if you're not paid," or if it expires. But they, they choose to stay in those lots, because it's actually the people that are trying to make an effort to pay. We usually respond to these people in less than three minutes, because like I said, we can see them when they walk to their vehicle. As far as not being able to read the signs, in campus bookstore parking lot, there are two signs that's almost as big as my pickup truck. There, there's no way you cannot read these signs. Once again, it's just angry people that got booted, thinking they could park their car and not have to pay to leave, or to leave the lot. If they have a problem paying in those lots, then they have a problem paying for city parking as well. It's just those people that think they can park and get away, and nobody's going to know the difference. We run reports probably every thirty minutes, and those reports tell us which spot is paid for and what time those spots expire. Then we walk the parking lots to see who has paid and who has not. And once in a while, those machines will actually tell us that a spot is not paid for when it has been paid for. But when that person brings us the receipt showing that they've paid, the boot is removed. We don't stand there and still try to collect the fee from these people, okay? We understand these are computers, and they do make errors. But as far as reducing the fine to forty bucks, then you've just cost both of us our job, because they pay us on an hourly wage, an hourly wage to be in these lots. And like I said, I am there during the day, and on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night as well, and my partner is there in the evening time. So you've just cost us our jobs, okay? And all, all your complaints that you get, I mean, about us not being in uniform, this is what we wear. We have very visible name tags, we have receipts that have phone numbers and addresses and everything else on it. And I can even show you proof that we take credit cards and debit cards and everything else. So it's just angry people from being booted. And don't get me wrong, I would be angry, too, if I got booted and got charged a hundred bucks. But I promise you, the next time I parked in that lot, I would be able to read the sign that I parked directly in front of. Thank you.
I have a question for you. It sounds to me like you're already meeting a lot of these requirements.
Yes, sir.
And so, it's really kind of protecting you, because our, your company has the integrity to meet the requirements.
Yes, sir.
So if I'm, to hear the bottom line, it's mainly the fee of the forty dollars?
Yes.
To reduce it, reducing to forty dollars?
And the gentleman that is my boss out of Dallas sent an email to each and every one of you with a proposal. He said he has no problem meeting with the city of Fayetteville to work on a proposal. He would like regulation for this. But if the fee is lowered to forty dollars, like I said, then we have lost our jobs, because there's no way they can pay us an hourly wage for us being out there as, as long as we are.
Well, currently, we have a sixty-dollar towing maximum. It seems to be logical that sixty dollars to tow, like Kit said, it costs, it seems like it would cost more to tow than it would to boot. I understand manpower, but you also have to look at storage of vehicles. So I'm trying to figure out the inequity here, and the profitability, because I don't know it, but I'm trying to be logical about thought.
Yes, sir.
What is a fair price? A hundred dollars is perceived and seems, in reality, a lot.
I do not know who, who come up with those fees, but like I said, on each one of the signs, forty-one signs, it does state on there that you will be booted and charged a minimum of a hundred dollars.
Because I certainly do not want to see anyone lose their job. I don't want to see anyone put out of business. It's too hard to get a job, and it's-
Yes, sir.
And business is business, and it is a private parking lot. But at the same time, when you see a business, a Better Business Bureau rating of F on a company, and you see literally hundreds of complaints, then it is understandable that it's our responsibility to somehow, we can be your ally here and, and say that we do have something in writing to manage this, because currently, we don't. And so, if you're meeting all of these requirements, then you're to be commended for that, that protects your business. And I, I guess, a hundred dollars does seem like a lot, that, listen, that's a lot.
I agree. I mean, like I said, if it was me that got booted, I'd be angry over a hundred dollars myself. I know Jeff out of Dallas had talked about seventy or eighty dollars, but I don't know if he put that in the email that he said he sent to you all.
Okay.
And I don't know where he's coming up with, with his price either. I don't know if it's, you know, for, I know, I'm sure it includes our wages and as far as like the materials, the boots, and, and stuff like that, so.
But you're telling me you only have two employees?
Yes, sir.
To cover all, because I guess if you look at this, it sounds like there's some- Because I guess if you look at this, it sounds like there's some guys and, you know.
There used to be. Whenever I started, I worked with a gentleman, and he was let go.
Okay.
And I believe I replaced a gentleman, so.
Well, like I say, it is certainly not our intent to put anyone out of business. Everyone has the opportunity to manage their private property and to have profitability off of it and to do the best they can with what they have. So that's what I have to think about. But at the same time, again, it sounds like you're meeting most of this criteria. The biggest problem that you have with this is restricting it to a $40 level.
Yes, sir.
And so I may offer an amendment to bring it to $60 to make it equitable with towing as a conciliatory measure, but then it would be up to city council, of course, to discuss that.
And I also understand that there have been complaints about the East Square parking lot with $100 fines. We don't even do the East Square parking lot in the evening time.
That's right.
The only time that is done is during lunchtime, and that is a $30 fee. And we don't even
You're talking about the one by the federal building?
Yes, sir.
But I know someone that got a evening ticket there.
We do not do it at night. Our boss does not want us over
Well, I guess it's changed.
It may have been, you know, when the gentlemen were there.
Yeah, because I do know someone personally that, I was at an event where they got booted and they were charged $100.
Well, we no longer do it because our boss does not want us over there by ourselves in the evening time.
So you don't do it anymore?
We, no, sir. Well, like I said, we haven't done it since I've been here, so.
Okay.
And we do not boot East Square like whenever Farmer's Market is going on because we don't want to discourage, you know, people from using that lot for Farmer's Market, so. Like in the depot parking lot, we've got Chipotle's and Arcega, and they pay for a certain amount of spots every month for their customers to be able to park free. Well, we watch people park in these free customer parking spots and then walk around the corner to Jimmy John's or walk over to Georgia's.
I mean, part of the theory of paying for parking is to move people.
Yes.
Otherwise, there's an encampment set up and there you go. So I understand that in parking lot management and paid parking. So I think that I will offer an amendment this evening out of equitability with the towing to increase it to $60, but it would be up to city council to discuss that.
Thank you.
But we're currently talking about the amendment. No, okay.
No, we're in the
Okay. I would like to offer an amendment.
Can I get some more public comment, Mark? You want to do the amendment now? I mean, I'm doing public comment. Do you want to do the amendment or do you want to wait?
Well, we need to discuss the amendment before we go back to the
Okay, that'll be fine.
I would like to amend the price to be $60. Simply it puts it in an equitable position with the towing situation. If I have a second, that's fine. If I don't, then I've done the best I can here.
I guess I'll ask, do I hear a second? I think your motion dies without exception.
Okay.
All right. Now, let's continue the public discussion. Who would like to also address us on this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. All right. We have
May.
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry you had a question. I apologize.
Do we just have one company that boots? Is there just?
David, you know anything? No, no, no. May, would you come back up to the
To my knowledge
I thought we were the only ones here, but there was an article ran on the news that said something about a lady's vehicle had been towed or booted at the university.
That would be the university.
But we don't go up there.
And this ordinance has no effect on university parks.
Yeah, because we don't go up there. But the only lots we do is campus bookstore, the depot lot, and the East Square lot by the federal building.
In answer to your question, Councilmember Gray, we don't know who the individual private lots contract with. There's no requirement to notify the city, no requirement of permitting if they don't have a location within the city of Fayetteville. So there could be an individual business that might be monitored at some period.
But they would need a business license.
If they have a business license for the, it's for entities that are located
With physical addresses.
Physical address in the city of Fayetteville, so. But we just don't have a means of knowing.
Thank you.
And there was at least one privately owned lot at the Dixon that was not mentioned in what she covers, so it is entirely possible that there is at least one more company that covers the Dixon parking deck.
Rhonda.
I hate to ask you to come back up. We're giving your exit last night, but I do have a question. Did Jeff Clont, the co-owner who wrote this message, tell you and your other worker that you'd lose your jobs if this
No, ma'am.
If you get that?
No, ma'am. Well, you figure, we make $12 an hour. Okay? And like on lunchtime, if I only get two boots, you know, that's $60. So if I'm there for three hours at $12 an hour, I mean, it hardly justifies me even being out there. So whenever I work evening times and we're able to charge the $100 fee, then that is what helps justify me being out there.
But he didn't tell you that you're going to lose your job if this goes
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. Not at all.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
I should note for the city council that private pay-to-park lots have two revenue sources. Well, you would think their primary revenue source would actually be people that pay to park as well as, of course, the penalty part.
Thank you.
What other discussion do we have on this? Anybody got any final comments? Oh, I'm sorry, we're on the first reading. Does anybody want to?
Motion to suspend the rules and move to the second reading.
Well, the motion is second to go to the second reading. Lisa, would you please call the row?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Hattie?
Yes.
Tenet?
Yes.
Schottmeyer?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
In ordinance to enact section 72.73, Regulation of Wheel Clamps or Booting on Private Pay-to-Park Lots Within the Entertainment District Parking Zone and the Downtown Business Parking District Zone into the Fayetteville Code.
I move to suspend the rules, go to the third and final reading.
We have a motion and a second to go to the third and final reading. Lisa, would you please call the row?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Hattie?
Yes.
Tenet?
Yes.
Schottmeyer?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
In ordinance to enact section 72.73, Regulation of Wheel Clamps or Booting on Private Pay-to-Park Lots Within the Entertainment District Parking Zone and the Downtown Business Parking District Zone into the Fayetteville Code.
Any final comments now from the council? You know, council, years ago, we, it seems like a very long time ago, it was 2010, we did not have enabling legislation, and we had folks' vehicles being towed all the way to P Ridge where they had to pay cash. I didn't think that was fair. So we didn't have enabling legislation, and we got some thanks to Linsley Smith. So we put a $60 limit on the towing, thanks to the work of Linsley and city attorney Kit Williams and city council at that time. Some of you were there then. But then they started booting. It's $100 for every boot. Now, I don't know. I can show you, I don't know how many emails, phone calls, Facebook posts, pictures. I could go on and on and on tonight with that. And it was always the same story. Why is the city putting a boot on my car? I continuously said, "We don't boot and we don't tow unless you're parked in an emergency parking space or across somebody's driveway. We don't boot at all." But every time somebody got a boot, we got a call. And it was probably literally, I don't know, David, how many hundreds?
Yes, sir, hundreds. We get calls every week.
And it's a constant thing. Now, just like when we had to address towing, we've got to address booting. And again, we took the booting to David Wiggery, who sponsored this, and he's brought, we've brought this to you because now we have enabling legislation. I think time's come that we have to take a position here. And no, I don't want to see anybody lose their jobs. I don't want to see anybody go out of business. But at the end of the day, I think the prices have been too steep. I think it needs to be addressed. I think we need to address it. And if we don't, if we don't address it, I don't know who will. And if we don't address it now, I don't know when it's going to get done. So it's not an easy task, but it's something that we need to do. And I think it's a council and administration we need to address it and put this to an end. And with that, Lisa, would you please call the row?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Hattie?
Yes.
Tenet?
Yes.
Schottmeyer?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Now, I do understand that the ordinance review will be looking at the price, understand?
We actually have got a change to the towing ordinance through the next item.
All right. All right. Moving on to number two. Amend 72.70, Application of Parking Regulation Chapter of the Fayetteville Code to extend the application of non-consensual towing regulations for private pay-to-park lots to the downtown business district parking zone. Kit?
Whereas the wheel clamp regulations for private pay-to-park lots should be applicable in both the entertainment district parking zone and the downtown business district parking zone, and whereas the non-consensual towing regulations and its sign requirement should be extended to the downtown business district parking zone for private pay-to-park lots. Now, therefore, it being ordained by the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, section one. If the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amend section 72.70, Application of the Parking Regulations Chapter of the Fayetteville Code by placing all existing wording in subsection A and enacting subsection B as shown below. Subsection B, Private Pay-to-Park Lots Within the Downtown Business District Parking Zone. Owners, managers of private pay-to-park lots within the downtown business district parking zones shall follow and obey all regulations set forth in sections 72.71, 72.72, and 72.73 of the Parking Regulations Chapter. These regulations do not apply to removal of vehicles from publicly owned or leased property to police-initiated toes nor to any other than private pay-to-park lots.
Alan, I believe, this is something that you're bringing forward to the council. Do you want to address it first?
Well, I am bringing it forward to the council in conjunction with our city attorney. And this is what I was talking about earlier during ordinance review committee. We discussed looking at this code to make it more, to fit better with the ordinance that we just passed. And so that's what this does.
Now, I appreciate the comments from the ordinance review committee. I had not realized we had so many problems with the other wheel clamp lot. But if we're going to regulate wheel clamps there, we certainly need to regulate non-consensual towing because we don't want them just to start to non-consensually tow if we restrict the wheel clamp. So that is why Alan sponsored this, and I was happy to write it up, to extend the non-consensual towing regulations only to the pay-to-park lots within the downtown business district, which is the only place we've had problems.
What questions do we have from the council on this? What public comment do we have on this tonight? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the council.
Move, suspend the rules, go to the second reading.
We have a motion and a second to go to the second reading. Lisa, would you please call the row?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Hattie?
Yes.
Tenet?
Yes.
Schottmeyer?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
In ordinance to amend section 72.70, Application of the Parking Regulations Chapter of the Fayetteville Code to extend the application of non-consensual towing regulations for private pay-to-park lots to the downtown business district parking zone.
Motion to suspend the rules, move to the third and final reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go to the third and final reading. Lisa, would you please call the row?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Hattie?
Yes.
Tenet?
Yes.
Schottmeyer?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
In ordinance to amend section 72.70, Application of the Parking Regulations Chapter of the Fayetteville Code to extend the application of non-consensual towing regulations for private pay-to-park lots to the downtown business district parking zone.
Final comments from the council? I want to thank the ordinance review for their work on a lot of these amendments, these ordinance. Alan, I want to thank you for bringing this forward. I know that the ordinance review has done a lot of work on this booting and the amendments, and I want to personally thank you all for the work that you've done on ordinance review on this. Any other final comments? Lisa, would you please call the row?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Hattie?
Yes.
Tenet?
Yes.
Schottmeyer?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Number three, 96.02, Unreasonable or Excessive Noise Prohibited. In ordinance to amend 96.02, Unreasonable or Excessive Noise Prohibited, Exceptions to Restrict Late Night Construction Activity Noises Near Residents. Kit?
Whereas the noise from late night and early morning construction of private developments near residences can unreasonably disturb the resident's sleep and peaceful enjoyment of their homes or apartments, and whereas restrictions on such late night construction noise near residences during the period of 11:00 p.m. until 7:00 a.m. is reasonable, proper, and necessary to protect the peace, health, and safety of Fayetteville citizens. Now, therefore, it being ordained by the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, here by amend section 96.02, Unreasonable or Excessive Noise Prohibited, Exceptions by enacting a new subsection D, Late Night Construction Noise Near Residents, as shown below. Subsection D, Late Night Construction Noise Near Residents. For the purposes of this section, construction noise from private development construction activity shall be deemed annoying or disturbing to a person reasonably calculated to disturb the peace and unreasonably offensive and injurious to the public if the sound or noise is produced later than 11:00 p.m. every day and prior to 7:00 a.m. on all days except Sundays, when the quiet time shall extend until 9:00 a.m., and is plainly audible at or near any residence, apartment, home, condo, et cetera, within 150 yards of the construction activity. Subsection one, the measurement standard shall be by auditory senses and include transient construction activity noise sources. Subsection two, emergency construction activity to repair or prevent a dangerous condition in order to protect the health, safety, and welfare of Fayetteville citizens or the workers on the development project site is exempt from this provision if authorized in advance or ratified later by the mayor. Subsection three, this subsection takes precedence over any conflicting and less restrictive noise limitation provided in section 96.04, Limitations by Land Use Category Subsection D, Transient Source, and Subsection E, Construction. Number four, a variance pursuant to section 96.07, Permit for Variance, may also be requested and granted for necessary and temporary after-hours construction activities.
Okay. Chairman?
City of Fayetteville's development services offices and other offices, I'm sure, oftentimes receive complaints from citizens where construction activities are occurring outside the normal working hours. There's a reasonable expectation that construction does occur in longer periods sometimes because it is temporary than just your normal eight to five. However, we've received complaints after midnight, before 6:00 a.m., and oftentimes on weekends, which I think is where we've received some of the more irate complaints because oftentimes weekends are those times when citizens are home most of the time during either working or non-working hours. We've worked with the mayor and city's attorney's office to add a new subsection, as Mr. Williams read, to our existing noise ordinance. Essentially, it would create a quiet time from 11:00 p.m. until 7:00 a.m. on each day of the week, except for Sunday, when that would be extended to 9:00 a.m. There is a process for emergency repairs, and there's also a process for a variance, which we get a look at. As I mentioned at agenda session, there are times when construction activities have to occur in, outside of the normal working hours. So the example I gave was the Dixon building required concrete to start being poured at to city contractors or any road, sewer, water, storm drain type of work, any county or state projects, obviously, because oftentimes we pick off-peak hours actually to do those projects when citizens are affected the least. And again, those are temporary as well. And then finally, this is for private construction-related projects, and we would enforce this as we do any of our other noise ordinance enforcement mechanisms. And with that, staff is recommending approval of this ordinance.
What questions do we have from the council?
Well, I have a comment and then a question. First, I want to thank the administration and the chief of staff and planning for working on this, because I started getting some of those phone calls too here a couple of months ago, and I started relaying those complaints to the powers that be the administration's office, and I really appreciate this legislation. My question for the city attorney is, could we add an emergency clause to this if we wanted to?
The problem with that is when you have a penalty provision, no fines or anything can be enacted under an emergency clause. So that's why I don't recommend either this or the other ones we did on towing or booting to have an emergency clause because of that restriction. So you really have an ordinance, but you have difficulty enforcing it. And that's why there's not one here.
We couldn't hear Alan's question.
I wanted to put an emergency clause on it so it wouldn't...
Go into effect immediately?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think that's just over there.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
But we would appreciate you passing it tonight, so it will be able to go into effect as quickly as possible. And, you know, actually, we've had complaints, I think, kind of come in slowly through the years. I got a complaint on the billing, the rebuilding of the Capa-Cappa-Gamma House a year or so ago, and I think this will solve a problem that's kind of been lingering and hadn't been really enough to really get enough momentum until you started hearing complaints from the view and other construction activities that was, you know, that was going on. I really think this is something we needed to have in our ordinance, and I thank Jeremy for his work on this.
Any other questions from the council? Yes, Chair?
I think this is fantastic, but I, having worked construction, you know, there are times here in the summer when, you know, the temperature exceeds a hundred degrees, where we commonly would start at five AM in order to avoid that hazard of heat strip for workers. Will that still be possible?
We have that in, Jeremy, we were talking about, I brought that very point up.
We did allow for that scenario to be, you don't have to prove a hardship for a variance in these particular applications, so that's certainly something we would look at as fact or any weather, you know, if we have a significant week of hot weather and construction activities like roofers or concrete work has to continue going on, it's something we could at least consider under the mayor's direction about whether to issue, be able to issue that for that temporary period of time.
That was my concern, if they'll let us know when they're going to be doing it, or we can allow for that certain period.
So that, sorry, so that's acceptable in a case-by-case situation?
Yeah, it would be, to be honest with you.
Yeah, it's ninety-six oh-seven, the permit for variance, it's the same thing that the mayor's been doing to allow the amp to sometimes exceed the noise ordinance, and I think some of the construction activity is going to be just as important as something like that.
That's a good point. Thank you for bringing that forward.
Okay. I don't think public comments, anybody want to address this on this? Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the council.
I move we go to the second reading.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to go to the second reading. Lisa, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Schottmeyer?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
An ordinance to amend section ninety-six oh-two, unreasonable or excessive noise prohibited, exceptions to restrict late-night construction activity noises near residents.
I move we suspend the rules, go to the third and final reading.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to go to the third and final reading. Lisa, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Schottmeyer?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
An ordinance to amend section ninety-six oh-two, unreasonable or excessive noise prohibited, exceptions to restrict late-night construction activity noises near residents.
Any final comments from the council? Lisa, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Schottmeyer?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Okay, number four, ninety-four point oh-six, flammable and combustible liquids. An ordinance amending section ninety-four point oh-six, flammable and combustible liquids, liquefied petroleum gases of the code of Fayetteville to permit above-ground propane and natural gas tanks for the exclusive purpose of fueling vehicles. Kip?
Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, section one, that the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amend section ninety-four oh-six, subsection L, so that after amendment, the subsection shall read as follows. Subsection L, the storage of liquefied petroleum gases in two-hundred-gallon or larger above-ground tanks is prohibited in the city. However, this prohibition shall not apply to tanks existing on May third, nineteen eighty-nine, which are in compliance with the requirements of the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code and the Arkansas Code, nor to properly install propane or natural gas tanks at a fueling station in a commercially or industrially zoned parcel if such tanks are used exclusively for the fueling of vehicles.
Terry?
Yes, council mayor. What we're looking forward to doing here with your approval is to install a above-ground fuel station at our fleet operations center near our other fueling station where we do diesel and gasoline. And we had to bring this amendment forward because we were prevented from that under the current ordinance. So due to the propane pilot program we've been doing, we've seen a great, well, a large way of improving our fuel usage in the city through using propane vehicles. We want to expand that program, but one of our challenges with that is having to fuel down the road and also not being able to use a Fuel Master system, which we can account for the mileage for the vehicles, where it's, which vehicles it is put into and how we can account for all of it. So we're looking to get your blessing on approving this so that we can move forward then in placing an order and getting bids for this tank, which will allow us, if we get this done by the end of the year, we will receive up to thirty percent rebate on this, up to thirty thousand dollars. We don't anticipate buying a hundred thousand dollar tank, but we still will get thirty percent off of this if we get this purchased by the end of the year. So that's why we brought this forward.
What questions, what questions do you have for Terry on this?
Yes.
Just like to say, this was presented to the equipment committee, and we looked at it, and we had some facts. You gave us some facts and figures and numbers that aren't all in our packet, but it looked like a great deal, and appreciate the staff and our new, and Jesse Beeks, our new fleet operations superintendent, for being so careful with our public dollars and looking at ways in which we can save those. So we, at the equipment committee, appreciate it very much.
Sarah?
I also want to commend fleet and transportation. Jesse and Barbara came and presented to the environmental action committee about the propane pilot program, and it's a great example of how we can save money by investing in energy efficiency. You know, we're seeing as little as two-year payback period on some of these investments, so thank you for investing in this.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, what public comment do we have on this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council.
I move that we suspend the rules and go to the second reading.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to go to the second reading. Lisa, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Schottmeyer?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
An ordinance amending section ninety-four oh-six, flammable and combustible liquids, liquefied petroleum gases of the code of Fayetteville to permit above-ground propane and natural gas tanks for the exclusive purpose of fueling vehicles.
Mayor, just a quick comment. It's not in your packet, but at agenda session, when I was reading through this particular ordinance, there was a requirement, and we have no idea why, but within chapter ninety-four, which is the fire prevention code, there's a requirement that all above-ground storage tanks, fueling storage tanks, go through a large-scale development. We don't know why that's part of the code. We don't think it's necessary. In my ten years here, I've seen one of those come through, and it was for a tank at the airport for fueling planes. And it really just caused a lot of confusion for the planning commission about why they were reviewing it, because there are no standards for them really to review for these types of developments. So it's not in your packet, but I would at least ask you to consider removing that section from chapter ninety-four, simply remove the requirement for a large-scale development. It does not remove any of the standards by which the fire marshal reviews these applications or any of these, any of these storage tanks, but it would remove some red tape for anyone processing the application for installation of these in the future. So just something for you to consider, I noticed.
Is that something we need to bring forward to them so we can repeal that? Is that...
It could be, unless you wanted to add it as a section tonight to repeal that section.
So you want to put an amendment?
What section is it?
I can find out very quickly. I just remembered, and I'm sorry I didn't bring it forward at the agenda session.
You know, I think probably, since they don't need to do it before the end of the year, I mean, that's their, we probably can get this, rather than trying to amend it now after we've already read it, I would rather just go ahead and pass this, and then we'll bring this to you at your next council meeting and let you repeal that particular section, which I agree with Mr. Pate, that sounds like we don't need it. So is that, would that be all right, that we can just keep going, and then we'll get that to you at the next meeting?
Okay, so we'll just wait on this. I assume, you know, you're just burning too. Okay, so we are on the third reading now.
Are we done the third?
No.
No, we just... Motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final reading.
We have a motion, a second to go to the third and final reading. Lisa, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Schottmeyer?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
An ordinance amending section ninety-four oh-six, flammable and combustible liquids, liquefied petroleum gases of the code of Fayetteville to permit above-ground propane and natural gas tanks for the exclusive purpose of fueling vehicles.
Any final comments from the council on this? Certainly want to thank the staff. Thank you, Donna. That's an excellent, this is really a good, good thing. This is going to save us a lot on energy and pleased with this. Any other final comments from the council? All right, Lisa, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Schottmeyer?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
All right, number five, revolving fund for interdepartmental resource efficiency loans. Resolution to request the city, the federal city administration to investigate feasibility and potential operational benefits of establishing a revolving fund for interdepartmental resource efficiency loans. Okay, Matt and Sarah are bringing this forward.
Sure. Would you like to go first, Sarah?
Go ahead.
Okay. Well, we all know that finding ways to save money is a good idea. Sometimes it can be a challenge to find a way to pay for that. As an example, we spend seven, five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars per year keeping streetlights on, but if we could find the money to change all those to LEDs, we would expect a minimum of forty percent of that to be saved every year, which would be two hundred and thirty thousand dollars directly, to go directly back into our street fund, which we could use to hire more transportation staff or to spend on more transportation projects. Similarly, we have about three hundred and forty thousand square feet of air-conditioned space that was built or last renovated before nineteen ninety-one. If we could find a way to save just ten percent of our energy costs there, well, I wish I could tell you what that is, but we don't have any way of knowing, but we know that it would be at least ten percent. So what green revolving funds are, is their way to find a way to pay for those projects and to keep paying for those projects. Basically, it just says you set aside an initial amount, and then the savings you generate from your first round of projects, you roll at least fifty percent of what you've saved forward to another round of projects. What this resolution does is it simply asks the administration to investigate that model and see if it could work for the city of Fayetteville. And we have some compelling evidence from universities to show it's been very successful there. And it also asks the administration to investigate kind of a new way of applying green revolving funds, which is called the HEAL model, which has been pioneered by L'Oreal USA at their manufacturing plant in Little Rock in partnership with the Clinton Foundation. And as early as March, the Clinton Foundation asked interested industry partners and governments to reach out to them for technical assistance. So the second part of this resolution asks the administration to do just that. It doesn't commit any funding, it doesn't establish a new line item in the 2014 budget, it doesn't establish a new fund, it doesn't establish a project list. It simply says, let's figure out if this is going to work for Fayetteville, and then let's make a decision at that time in context. So I ask that you vote for it.
Sarah?
Well, you know, to me, this is all about cutting waste to create jobs. It's an initiative that will help us improve our efficiency by optimizing the performance of our buildings and equipment and streamlining our operations and processes with the intent of being better stewards of public resources. Because really, when we waste energy, we waste money. And so what we're seeking to do is identifying target projects with a four-year payback period or less. So that means we'll be seeing some savings at the point that we're getting really concerned about the impact of the employee raises that we just gave. And hopefully, by reducing our operating expenses, we can free up funding to fill our unfilled positions and hopefully create some new jobs. The second part of this being the HEAL program, that would create a really great new benefit for our employees by basically giving them low-interest loans to make energy efficiency improvements in their own homes, so that they would see that savings on a monthly basis. So even though we aren't paying them more, we're putting more money back into their pockets through investments in energy efficiency. So I think it's a real win for the employees, it's a win for the city, and this is a win for the taxpayers.
Okay. Any other, any questions for Sarah and Matt on this from the council? Yes, Del?
As I recall, when we were having our budget talks earlier, I think this was, came forth as one of those things we call maybe on our wish list, perhaps, at best I recall. Is that, is that right?
Well, that is, that's something that was, that was brought up, I believe Matthew brought it up at the budget, but I think what was being asked of us is a resolution to study the feasibility of it. It's not like we're committing any money to budget right now until we look at it, and it's like any other resolution, you ask us to look at it, bring you back, the staff will look at it, bring you back some sort of plan, and you can either vote it in or vote it out, or...
Yeah, I think it sounds, it sounds great, and I think what L'Oreal and Maybelline in Little Rock has done sounds fantastic. I just want us to be careful about asking our staff to study too many things when we have, you know, when we're down about some FTE, I don't know how many we're down right now, but we're down some. So I think that's, I think that's important. Also, I think that our sustainability coordinator, our move to hire him was an excellent move and moves, a great move in this direction.
appropriate means, I'm going to support this because I know that it's needed, but I don't want to set a precedent that we start being, bringing resolutions, which they're, they're resolutions, they're wish lists, they're ideas, they're visions, and they're good, that we can, we can get out of control again. I think if you start having these coming in in advance to a total budget analysis, whenever we're going forward in a couple of weeks with our budget, so, so I do have, I do, I did want to voice my concern with this perceptually setting a precedent of requesting funds that may seemingly be earmarked, and it may not come to fruition once we get to the budget process. And so, we have to be aware that this is certainly needed. It did come from a committee that is a committee that we have to offer advice, but let's also be aware of the timeliness and the time that we're going to be committed in looking at our budget as a whole. And I just wanted to state that publicly, because I don't want to start being sidelined, or people might, you know, you're, you're, all of us have maybe our special projects that we're interested in, but we have to look at the budget as a whole. We have to look at the budget process as a budget process and not as just specific resolutions coming willy-nilly in front of the city council. But this one, I'm not saying is willy-nilly. It did come from the Animal Services Committee. So, just, just my thoughts on it, and I wanted to publicly mention this.
Okay. Alan, you said you had a comment.
Yeah, and, and, and Mark, I just wanted to clarify, the reason I took it to Animal Services when I did is I've accepted a new job and will be in intensive job training for the next three months, so I may not be here when this is discussed at budget time, so I thought it was important that I do my due diligence and bring it to the council now, so that they see the work that they've done.
Okay. Thanks for the question.
Well, I agree with Mark and, but I don't have a deep appreciation for the amount of research that's gone into this. I do think you've done your due diligence on it, but I have to agree with Mark, because in essence, I see this as an attempt to get something in the budget before we've seen the budget, and, you know, I very well may vote for a budget that contains this, but I won't be able to make that decision until I've seen the rest of the budget, until I've seen where we are. Are we in the black, or are we in the red? What's the recommendation? How does this impact future years? And that's true of all projects, so I'm not singling this out, but this is the first time I can remember where we've seen something be asked, we've seen the council be asked to put something in the budget before we started budget talks. It's the first time, and I don't think it's a good habit to get into. I think it's important, I, our number one duty is our fiduciary, fiduciary responsibility to the city. That's our statutory duty, and I just feel like if I were to, if I were to vote for this before I'd seen the budget, I'd be neglecting that responsibility. My preference would be that we table this indefinitely and have the discussion when the budget talks start, and being sensitive to your job training, I would say I've seen budget talks go to the end of December, so you may-
Sometimes it's beyond.
You may still, you may be back before they're over.
The administration is not recommending-
And I'm guessing, since the mayor signed onto this, it's probably pretty likely that we will see it in the budget. I would be surprised to see him sponsor the resolution and then to not see it in the budget. So, I appreciate the research, and I'll be weighing all of that whenever I see the full budget, but I can't vote for this tonight, and I honestly, I'd move to table it indefinitely.
I'd second that.
Okay.
You can discuss the motion to table it.
Okay. You know, when I say, I'm going to be in some intensive job training. My job's going to be flying me back here for each city council meeting on Tuesdays, and that will be, be scheduled through an indefinite period of time for at least thirty-six months. So, whether I'm here to discuss this at budget time, with all the resources we've put in with staff, I just would greatly appreciate you not tabling this.
We have a motion seconded table, so we'll have to-
I'll have a comment, and then, if I can, because I was confused last, and I apologize for missing the agenda session last week. I was out of town, on business. Totally understand when you're flying back and forth all over the country or the world. But after watching the agenda session, I'm still sort of confused. I wasn't sure if we were changing our budget process, or I was going to ask Paul tonight, because I brought a whole bunch of things that I'd like to put in the budget, and I thought maybe I should make an amendment to this and just start adding stuff, but I know that's not our process, and I just, I, I, I don't think legislating it, I understand why now, because I didn't know about the job thing, but I still don't think legislation is needed necessarily. I believe that if, if the mayor signed off on it, I agree with what Alderman Petty said. It sounds like you're relatively in support of it, or you wouldn't have signed off on it. So, I'm guessing that during our budget talks-
Well-
You'll be able to talk about it, or somebody will be able to talk about it.
Let me just tell you, I've been in discussions with, with Chief of Staff and Paul Becker, and we were intending on bringing about $60,000 for the improvements in the budget session, but Alderman Long wanted to bring forward a resolution before he had to leave town, so that's kind of, that's where we are, but you'll be looking at that during the budget discussions.
I think it's more prudent to table it than, than to put legislation forward that, that does set a precedent in this situation.
What other thoughts do we have?
And, and I, the reason I second, the reason I agree with that is I have, I intend to support this down the road, whatever's in there, but I just, I don't want to see us pull things out. We've all been in committee meetings where needs were talked about. I mean, I've got, you know, we need a, we need a turning lane, and, and we sit in our street committee and say, well, there's, the money's not, but there, it doesn't mean that we wouldn't talk about what our street needs or later. So, I do think that it's good for our process, for us to all, even whether we're on a committee that talks about it or not, to, to try to bring this in after the staff has had a chance to hear from some of us and hear from some of our committees and hear from citizens and hear for, and, and look at the whole thing in whole, because we may be surprised we don't know everything that's coming up, and so, as important as the animal shelter is, we don't know everything. So, I, that's, that's why I would like to see this tabled until we have discussions together as a group in the budget process. I, I, I could bring a minute, a motion that we just go into budget conversation now, I guess, and just start bringing our things forward. We could stay here late, but-
Well, let's, let's, let's all calm down.
Well, no, I mean, we could talk about-
The press is here.
No, we could do budget tonight. I don't mind that.
I'm not quite ready to do budget tonight.
Okay.
I think we'll have Paul here before we start.
Okay. Well, we need Paul. Where's Paul?
We have a, Mulkin, and we have a motion seconded table, yes?
I'd just like to point out, you know, this is just a resolution. If it, if everything doesn't come to fruition, it doesn't come to fruition, but just previous to the $60,000 request, we had a resolution for $500,000 that was on the agenda that may not come to fruition, so this just doesn't, just doesn't make sense to me. Sorry.
Okay. Any other comments? All right. So, we're going, voting on the table, right?
Motion to table indefinitely.
All right. Any other final comments on it? Yes?
I would just like to commend Alderman Long for bringing this to our attention, because I've recently had several animals dumped on me, and I've had to use the animal shelter to place those animals, so I've been spending quite a bit of time down there, and they are desperately in need of these items. And, you know, they've done a lot of work to increase their adoption rate, to reduce the kill rates, and they're doing a lot, and they need the equipment to help them do a better job. So, regardless of whether or not we vote on this tonight or include in our budgetary talks, it's, it's a really important need that we have to address.
Specific resolutions coming willy-nilly in front of the city council. But this one, I'm not saying is willy-nilly. It did come from the Animal Services Committee. So, just my thoughts on it, and I wanted to publicly mention this.
Alan, you said you had a comment?
Yeah, and Mark, I just wanted to clarify. The reason I took it to Animal Services when I did is I've accepted a new job and will be in intensive job training for the next three months. So, I may not be here when this is discussed at budget time. So, I thought it was important that I do my due diligence and bring it to the council now so that they see the work that they've done.
Thank you, Mr. Justice.
Well, I agree with Mark, but I don't have a deep appreciation for the amount of research that's gone into this. I do think you've done your due diligence on it. But I have to agree with Mark because, in essence, I see this as an attempt to get something in the budget before we've seen the budget. And, you know, I very well may vote for a budget that contains this, but I won't be able to make that decision until I've seen the rest of the budget, until I've seen where we are. Are we in the black or are we in the red? What's the recommendation? How does this impact future years? And that's true of all projects. So, I'm not singling this out. But this is the first time I can remember where we've seen something be asked, we've seen the council be asked to put something in the budget before we started budget talks. It's the first time, and I don't think it's a good habit to get into. I think it's important. Our number-one duty is our fiduciary responsibility to the city. That's our statutory duty. And I just feel like if I were to, if I were to vote for this before I'd seen the budget, I'd be neglecting that responsibility. My preference would be that we table this indefinitely and have the discussion when the budget talks start. And being sensitive to your job training, I would say I've seen budget talks go to the end of December. So, you may...
Sometimes it's beyond.
You may still...
But the administration is not recommending that.
And I'm guessing since the mayor signed onto this, it's probably pretty likely that we will see it in the budget. I would be surprised to see him sponsor the resolution and then to not see it in the budget. So, I appreciate the research, and I'll be weighing all of that whenever I see the full budget. But I can't vote for this tonight. And honestly, I'd move to table it indefinitely.
I'd second that.
Okay.
You can discuss the motion table.
Okay. You know, I'm going to be in some intensive job training. My job's going to be flying me back here for each city council meeting on Tuesdays, and that will be scheduled through an indefinite period of time for at least thirty-six months. So, whether I'm here to discuss this at budget time with all the resources we've put in with staff, I just would greatly appreciate you not tabling this.
We have a motion seconded table, so we'll have to...
I'll have a comment, and then if I can. Because I was confused last, and I apologize for missing the agenda session last week. I was out of town on business. Totally understand when you're flying back and forth all over the country or the world. But after watching the agenda session, I'm still sort of confused. I wasn't sure if we were changing our budget process, or I was going to ask Paul tonight. Because I brought a whole bunch of things that I'd like to put in the budget, and I thought maybe I should make an amendment to this and just start adding stuff. But I know that's not our process. And I just, I don't think legislating it, I understand why now because I didn't know about the job thing. But I still don't think legislation is needed necessarily. I believe that if the mayor signed off on it, I agree with what Alderman Petty said. It sounds like you're relatively in support of it, or you wouldn't have signed off on it. So, I'm guessing during our budget talks, you'll be able to talk about it, or somebody will be able to talk about it.
Let me just tell you all. I've been in discussions with Chief of Staff and Paul Becker, and we were intending on bringing about $60,000 for the improvements in the budget session. But Alderman Long wanted to bring forward a resolution before he had to leave town. So, that's where we are. But you'll be looking at that during the budget discussions.
I think it's more prudent to table it than to put legislation forward that does set a precedent in this situation.
What other thoughts do we have?
And the reason I second, the reason I agree with that is I intend to support this down the road, whatever's in there. But I just, I don't want to see us pull things out. We've all been in committee meetings where needs were talked about. I mean, I've got, you know, we need a, we need a turning lane. And we sit in our street committee and say, well, the money's not up there. It doesn't mean that we wouldn't talk about what our street needs are later. So, I do think that it's good for our process for us to all, even whether we're on a committee that talks about it or not, to try to bring this in after the staff has had a chance to hear from some of us and hear from some of our committees and hear from citizens and look at the whole thing in whole. Because we may be surprised, we don't know everything that's coming up. And so, as important as the animal shelter is, we don't know everything. So, that's why I would like to see this tabled until we have discussions together as a group in the budget process. I could bring a motion that we just go into budget conversation now, I guess, and just start bringing our things forward. We could stay here late, but...
Let's all calm down.
Well, no, I mean, we could talk about it. No, we could do budget tonight. I don't mind that.
I'm quite ready to do budget tonight.
I think we ought to have Paul here before we start.
Okay, well, we need Paul. Where's Paul?
We have a, Mulkin, and we have a motion seconded table, yes?
I'd just like to point out, you know, this is just a resolution. If everything doesn't come to fruition, it doesn't come to fruition. But just previous to the $60,000 request, we had a resolution for $500,000. That was on the agenda that may not come to fruition. So, this just doesn't, just doesn't make sense to me. Sorry.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, so we're going to vote on the table, right?
Motion table indefinitely.
All right. Any other final comments on it? Yes?
I would just like to commend Alderman Long for bringing this to our attention because I've recently had several animals dumped on me, and I've had to use the animal shelter to place those animals. So, I've been spending quite a bit of time down there, and they are desperately in need of these items. And, you know, they've done a lot of work to increase their adoption rate, to reduce the kill rates. And they're doing a lot, and they need the equipment to help them do a better job. So, regardless of whether or not we vote on this tonight or include in our budgetary talks, it's a really important need that we have to address.
Well, we will, you will be seeing it in the budgetary talks probably in the next three weeks. Okay? All right. So, we're voting to table, right? All right. Lisa, would you please call the row?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Tenet?
Yes.
Schultmyer?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Long?
No.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you all. Now, we go to number seven. Federal Government Channels Mission Statement Amendment. Resolution amending the federal government channels' mission statement, goals, statement, and operating policies approved by Resolution Number 180-10 to be reporting televised in meetings of the nominating committee of the city council by the federal government channel.
Yes, as chairman of the nominating committee, when I first heard about this, I was, I was open to the ideas. But the more I've thought about it, the more I've talked with other folks about it, and then, first and foremost, having sat in the interview session last Wednesday night that was indeed recorded, I saw the discomfort with several of the applicants. I think that, you know, one of the things that I was interested in finding out was why we had never recorded the nominating committee. And it's real obvious to me now, while we never have, it's the only time that we ask citizens to be in the hot seat. And if you know what I mean by the hot seat, they have personal questions asked them. And that term comes up several times every time we have an interview session. So, it's obvious to me why this committee has been exempt from this resolution through the years. And I certainly think that it needs to stay that way. First of all, before we go any farther, I would like to ask our attorney to clarify for us. I noticed, and many of you may have noticed, that it says ordinance or resolution. And I told him, I said, I don't understand this. Is this a resolution? I've always been told that resolutions didn't really carry much weight. And I had a feeling that this one carried some weight. So, he explained that there's a difference between resolution and resolution of intent. So, I would like for him to clarify that for us as a council and for hopefully all who are listening.
Okay, there is, there is a difference between an ordinance and a resolution. That ordinance must be read publicly three times, or it must suspend the rules. If we don't have it at three meetings, an ordinance is, in law, like when you amend the code or something like that, it's permanent. A resolution can be either very powerful or not very powerful. A resolution can usually be used to approve million-dollar contracts. I'd say that's a pretty powerful resolution. On the other hand, you can have a resolution of intent, which is basically just the city council expressing its intent. Therefore, not having any real operable effect, it's just expressing the intent of the city council. But resolutions are powerful and can make real change, like approving big contracts. Or, in this particular case, the original mission statement, goals, and operating policies of the federal government channel were adopted by a resolution. Resolution Number 108, I mean, 180-10. That's full force and effect, and it's been in effect ever since. Those policies have been in effect. To modify an ordinance, you must have an ordinance. But to modify a resolution, you can do that by resolution because ordinance are a little bit higher up in the power area. But it does not mean that resolutions are not powerful and are not effective. That's the primary way, really, that this city council operates. You pass a lot more resolutions than you do ordinances. Every contract, if you're not waiting competitive bidding, is by resolution. So, resolutions are important. And one resolution can be amended by a later resolution. A previous city council cannot bind the hands of a future city council. So, that just because there's a resolution that was passed in the past at some point in time does not mean that it cannot be amended in the future in most cases. Now, a resolution that authorizes the mayor to sign a contract or approves a contract, you can't just go back later and say, we're undoing that resolution because the contract has been signed and therefore contractual rights are done. But resolutions adopting policies or something can always be amended in the future.
Thank you. That's all I have for now, Mayor. I'll have some more comments later after further comment from Alderman in public.
Okay. What questions do we have in the council?
I actually have a question for city staff.
Sure.
I don't know if anybody from HR is here, but if not, I'll send it to you and if we need to get clarification. When we interview a city staff member, or let's say somebody wants to work for the water department, and they come in for a job interview, do we film those?
No, we do not.
Because there's HR law against it, correct?
I don't... Well, the Freedom of Information Act says that, one of the rare exceptions for having something that's always open in the public is that you can have an executive session for a personnel matter. But the personnel matter deals with an employee. So, hiring, firing, any kind of personnel decision, the city council could, in fact, go into executive session where it would be only you and the employee, maybe the supervisor. I don't get to go in, Press doesn't go in there. So, yes, employees' rights are protected by having the city council with the ability to go into executive session.
Thank you.
Yes.
I also have a clarifying question for our attorney. Is there a difference between an appointment and a hiring?
There can be. The Freedom of Information Act talks about city officials as well as employees. However, my interpretation is that is not a volunteer to a citizen committee, that therefore the Freedom of Information Act would not allow the nominating committee to close their meetings or to go into executive session because these are citizen volunteers. It's very similar in many ways to a job applicant. This is just an applicant saying, I'd like to be on this committee, and I'll work for free. However, it is not specifically under the Freedom of Information Act, and therefore it must be a public meeting, and no one can be excluded. It is a policy decision about whether or not you, as the city council, want to televise it. You can, or you don't have to. It's just totally up to what the city council believes is the best policy for the city.
Further follow-up? For commission members who are paid, or they can still consider volunteers in the description you just gave?
Yeah, I would say so, even though it is kind of strange that we do have some compensation paid to planning commission. That's the only group that gets paid. I don't, you know, I guess we need to, Don's an HR specialist. So, is that, just because you get paid, does that mean you're employee Don?
I'm not a lawyer of labor law. So, I would defer that to someone who might be more qualified to answer it.
Thank you.
Under the current situation where we have not recorded, I think it should be noted that these meetings have always been open, and anyone can come into the meeting, and anyone can participate in the meeting. And that certainly meets the Freedom of Information guidelines in a way. We have a community that has a reputation for being very engaged. And the reason they're engaged is because we have a broad committee structure that offers a lot of opportunities for engagement. It was evident in our interviews this last time that the interviewees were less comfortable, just simply because you said we are filming this. Any committee can be filmed at the request of any, I guess, how do we come up with the requests? Is it a, do, currently is any Alderman?
Yeah, any Alderman can request.
Specifically an Alderman?
Actually, if I could just make a point of clarification. The policy prior to the current, the current policy operating under is Resolution 180-10, passed in 2010. The one prior to that was Resolution 27-06, passed in 2006. In 2006, it just, it didn't actually go as specifically to say a particular meeting was going to be filmed. It gave priority in filming. First level of priority, second level of priority, et cetera. And within that, it said first level of priority would be given to televising the City of Fayetteville governmental meetings. Governmental meetings are defined as governing bodies created by the City of Fayetteville, which meet F O A criteria, including all committees, subcommittees, boards, commissions, task force, and other bodies dealing with the City of Fayetteville business. It wasn't a specific, this classification of committee will be filmed. It did, however, in Section Three of that, allow any council member, any elected official, to request the filming of a meeting. So, even if a meeting had not necessarily been a high priority to have been filmed, a council member could have requested it. In the Resolution 180, 2010, which superseded it, it gave more specific clarity to filming requirements. So, in this particular item, it says, and Lindsey might be quicker recording this section. This is what Fritz gave me today. That basically all city council meetings, special city council meetings, and committee meetings will be recorded, televised, and cable cast. So, it didn't require an Alderman to request the filming of that committee at that time. And I believe if you watched the telecommunications board meeting, a question was asked, well, how come if the policy says this, it wasn't filmed? Because we subsequently got a request from a council member for the filming of it, which is also allowed in this policy. It also allows request if it meets certain guidelines, which obviously a council committee meeting would. And I think the answer, I think it's just Steve Smith, who's on the time of communication, so I think he asked the question, is here, so he might speak to it specifically. But I believe the question was from Fritz was simply that we just didn't catch it. It had not been done previously. The policy says that we should. That's why when this came to the attention, we went to the direction of filming the last one because it was the first time one had been challenged. We looked at it. The policy was extremely clear that it would be filmed.
Yes?
I'd just like to make a comment. Alderman, Kenyon? You did make a comment that you said the meetings have always been open. But with all due respect, Alderman Gray, in August of 2012, when I came to a nominating committee meeting during the election, I asked if I could enter the nominating committee room to watch the interview processes. I was trying to learn more about our city government. And you said, no, that it was a closed meeting. So, they haven't always been open.
That's very, that's very interesting, Alderman Long, because two committee members who were there have, I don't remember that session, and I don't think I would have said it because I know they're open. But also, two committee members who are there said that they do not remember that happening. Now, there was an instant when Alderman Adams' husband was being interviewed, and she chose to, she chose to recuse herself or leave the room. But I don't recall that. But if I did, I certainly apologize. It was incorrect. But I do have two members who were there who say that I didn't, so who knows?
And I'm not, I'm not pointing...
Well, thank you for what it is, Alan. You should be allowed.
Right.
And it's a public meeting.
And I'm not...
You have been there since.
Right, and I have come since. And I'm not upset about that at all. I mean, I did walk into the city attorneys' meeting office right after that happened and asked the question of whether or not I was able to enter the meeting. And so, it did actually happen, but...
Yes?
Mayor, for someone who's been through nominating three times, I think it's a bad idea to videotape when you're having interaction with citizens based upon questions for them to become committee members. I wouldn't have cared for it when I was going through the process. It's an open meeting. If someone wants to attend, they can attend. But I don't think you make drastic stuff like this because of one incident, which I'm aware now, being told tonight. I'd like to go ahead and vote against it or vote for the resolution.
Well, I have, I have some public comment.
I understand.
Okay, but you're making a motion to pass the resolution, right?
You are correct. I'm going to vote.
Well, I'm going to, but...
I want to vote in support of the resolution, yes.
Okay. Do we have a second, I suppose?
Alderman Schultmyer, were you making a motion to pass the resolution?
I was making a motion to pass the resolution, yes, sir. It says it will not be televised, correct?
That's correct. That's what the resolution says.
I think some other Alderman had...
But you've got a motion.
Well, you have a motion. Does he have a second? This is what I'm asking.
And you don't have to vote immediately after the second.
No, because we're going to take a comment.
Is there a second to that motion?
Yes, there's a second.
Okay, all right. Now, I've got a motion on the floor.
Now, I just need to clarify. Okay. Now, let's take, let's take some public comment. All right.
Stephen Smith, Ward Two. Thank you very much, Mayor Jordan, and members of the council. It's always a pleasure to be here. I apologize that this is not something that's happening in my backyard. I'm not going to make any money if it passes. I'm not going to lose any money if it passes. And I'm not asking for money from reserves. This is just something I want to talk about, but I think is really important. But I think that you are to be committed, and I appreciate all you do for open government and accountable government. Mayor Jordan, shortly after taking office, passed the most extensive open government executive order of any city in the state of Arkansas that exceeds the State Freedom of Information Act. I know that Kit and Jason and Sandra and Lisa have responded well above times required by the Arkansas Freedom of Information Act for numerous requests, and some of them somewhat annoying, no doubt. And this council has a long record dedicated to open government. And the fact that the City of Fayetteville has, the only city in the state that has three access channels, public, educational, and government. And I must say that both the government channel and the public access channel have improved vastly in recent years, and part of that's because of the support of this council and the funding for it. I remember years and years ago, I was on the board of a group called Fayetteville Open Channel, which was the first group that did an access thing. And one of the things that the access station started, or trying to do for a while, was film meetings to the city council, and there was no government channel. And there was some resistance to having those meetings filmed and put on the cable channel. So, it's something that I'm very committed to. But I'm reluctant to speak against this because in opposition to my friend Alderman Gray. But I think it's, we have a fundamental difference about open government on this point. And I want to go through a few points. I realize my notes are more extensive than the proposed resolution, but I'll try to get through it as quickly as possible. I think this proposal is flawed in three important ways. First, I think it's a solution in search of a problem. I don't see any hard data that there's a problem when the policy was put together by the staff and the telecom board and considered by the council. An extensive study was done. This was never brought up as a problem. But now, it seems to be there's some anecdotal evidence being presented that, well, people are uncomfortable applying for city positions if they're going to be filmed. I'm not sure that's the case. But even if it is, this proposal doesn't solve the problem. The meetings will be open under the Freedom of Information Act. And successful applicants are going to be filmed at whatever board or commission they're applying for. They're going to be, they're going to be on it. And if they don't like to be on film, they're probably not going to apply for these positions. And there's going to be people questioning them and arguing with them. Just like the arguments go on in this council. Maybe they're uncomfortable. But closing down government is not a reason or a solution to somebody being uncomfortable because they're serving the public and doing so in the public. The real reason, and I've spent a lot of time trying to recruit people to apply for boards and commissions because, not only ones that I'm on, but others that I think are important, and try to get good people. And not a single, a lot of people say, no. Not a single one of them says, oh, no, I don't want to be on because I'll be on TV. I mean, most people I know love to be on TV. And some boards want to have subcommittees go for hours and hours and be on TV. The reasons I get from people, one is they say, it takes too much time. I just don't have enough time. The meetings go too long, and they meet once a month. And so, I have to go out of town on business, and I'd rather do that. Second reason is, well, I don't think we really have any influence. I mean, it's something I'm interested in, but really just advisory, and the council can take it or leave it. And I hate to put that much effort into if it's really not going to make any difference. I mean, if I were making a decision and going to be responsible for it, I might do it. The third reason, and this is one that I think is important, is the system is rigged. I've heard that numerous times. It's a rigged deal. There's no use in applying. I applied once before. I went in there. I had this great interview, and I never heard another word from them. Next thing I know, the council has approved somebody else. They didn't tell me why. They didn't tell me why my application wasn't good enough. They didn't tell me what I could do. I'm not applying again. It's a rigged deal. It's the old boy system at work, and I ain't going to play that game. I hear that more and more and more. I mean, that's the number-one reason that I hear, trying to recruit new people or get people to apply again. And by closing... And by closing these meetings, it just makes it that much worse. When people apply, they don't get a letter saying, we decided not to get you, or we decided not to get you for this. They don't get anything. But somebody else gets appointed a position. And if these were recorded, they might be able to watch and see what the arguments were, see what, why the nominating committee made the decision, did. Because when they come to the council, there's no discussion, they're just a nominating committee report, and people vote for it. So they don't know, there's no feedback from that. Third thing, I think it makes it worse. It's gonna make it more difficult for people who are disabled, who don't have transportation, who have to work, to find out what's going on with government. And that's one of the great things about our government channel is that people with disabilities or other reasons, they can't attend every meeting, and we have a lot of them. They can watch it online or on cable. Second thing is, all the applicants, if it, if I were applying, and I've applied four times, been through it, so I know a little better. If I thought I could watch the video later and figure out what was going on and why I didn't get it, that'd be fine. But otherwise, I might just sit in from the time the meeting opens until it closes and listen to all the questions you asked to everybody else before you get to me, so I can frame my answers, and they might be a little more comfortable having competing applicants sitting there watching them than they would a camera. Third thing is, trained access providers can come in and film this, even if the government channel doesn't. And they are much more clumsy, their camera angles and lighting will be much worse, they'll make noise, and other reasons. So it could be on anyway. But the main thing is, I think it'll cause a loss of confidence in our government. Both actual, because we have four council members acting, and nobody knowing what they're saying or what they're doing, but more importantly, perceived. Even people that don't watch it, aren't applying for things, they're gonna know that this city council voted to close it down, not to cover it. It's the first time since I've been watching government for forty years that this city's ever gone back instead of expanding openness. So I hope you'll consider these points and balance what may be a small or an imaginary bit of discomfort for people with the fundamental point of open government and allowing citizens access. So I hope you'll do that, and thank you again for all the work you do and for taking time to hear me. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm Stephen K., Ward Four. I just want to say that I have participated in the process for applying for these various commissions over the last year. I was at the most recent meeting that was recorded, and I must admit, I didn't even know where the camera was. So wherever it is and however it's filmed in there, they did a great job, because I personally was very comfortable in the room. I think the staff did a great job of making me feel comfortable. But, and with that, though, I think it's very important that these meetings be recorded and be put out there for the public to view. I think that Steve made some great points. If they're not gonna, if they're gonna be afraid to be filmed during the interview process, it's only exponential when you're actually voting on real issues and on tough issues, that you've gotta be able to be open and have a government that is comfortable with being open and being out in the limelight and have that light shined on it. And if we go backwards and start saying that this meeting can't be viewed by the public, or can only be viewed if you show up in person, well, then we definitely are affecting those people with handicaps and disabilities who can't get here. And we're going backwards, because then we are setting a precedent that the city council can say, well, we used to be really open and offer everything to be recorded, and then one day we decided that nominating meeting is gonna be done. What's gonna happen next week and next year? We cannot allow a slippery slope and allow us to go backwards. It is very important for an open government. That is one of the best things that Fayetteville has going for it, is that we have a government that the people feel confident in, that every one of you is viewed as someone that we can talk to, as the citizens can go up to and tell our true and honest opinions to, and that we know that by being able to view these meetings on TV, that even if we can't be here in person, because I can tell you there are many nights that I'd like to be here, but that I can't. I thought, but this, tonight, I thought this was very important, and I wanted to be here for this. But most nights, I've worked till seven or eight o'clock, and I can't be at these meetings. And most nights for these nominating meetings, I will tell you, for it to, to say that you have to just show up, because we will not have them recorded, I think that's not necessarily gonna happen. The fact of the matter is, I've participated in those, I was told a week before when my time was. When are we gonna get it out to the public that this is what the days of the nominating meeting are? Because if they're not gonna be recorded and put on TV, we're gonna have to post it and make sure that the public knows, on this date and at this time, we are starting these meetings, and you can come and sit down. And I think I've been either at four or five of these meetings, there was never a person there. Is that because no one wanted to come, or that no one knew when they were, other than those people being interviewed? If no one knew when they were, other than those being interviewed, then the public can't be there. And the only way the public can be there is when it's put on TV, and you have an opportunity to review what's happened. And these are political appointments. These are very important positions. And to say that the process is gonna be sheltered casts doubt on the rest of the process. Think of all the planning commissioners and the various other commissions that we have, Walton Arts Board, and the various boards that are out there. We're putting a shadow over how they got chosen. So if that shadows over how they got chosen, every decision from that point forward is tainted by the fact that this is just some appointment in some back room that no one's allowed to see. And that's what you've done, you've set up a system where there's a shadow over the government again. And we are a government that shines in the light, and you are trying to cloud that light by putting a door over, but we can't, we can't go in there. If you've worked, if you've got a job, if you can't be there, and of course, and if you don't know what time the meeting is and what day it's held, you won't be there to do it, and you can't go there to it. And you've clouded government. And this is a government that's Fayetteville's best quality, that's how open this government is. And I open every one of you who've been with your citizens and how each ward, we know what's going on. We can watch it on TV, we can review it, we can come up to you and talk to you about it. So don't cloud government now. Thank you.
Okay, Justin, you start, and then Mark, and then Adele.
Stephen, you brought up the term slippery slope.
Yes.
This would, this could create a slippery slope. What if I argue to you that the slippery slope could also go the other way? This is a public building. That restroom is a public building. Let's put a camera in there.
Those are not political actions going on in the bathroom. I should hope.
But I don't know, it's a personal situation, I would think, and so someone's personal issue, to me, I don't think we sit here and debate what a, what a personal issue is for somebody.
Okay. If I am applying for a public position, that is not, that is not personal anymore. The minute I put my, my name in the ring for that appointment and I ask for that, this is not them coming to me. This is me going to you saying, I want this appointment, I'm willing to do whatever it takes to get this appointment, if that means I have to be filmed in the public forum or sat up here on stage, I will do it.
I would argue that the reason you can say that is because you're extremely talented and don't mind standing up in front of people, and don't mind saying your, your mind, and you're extremely intelligent. I, I, but I absolutely disagree that most people feel that way. I think most people feel the opposite way, and say, yes, I'd love to help my city, but I don't want people at the end of it talking on live camera about why I am or am not the proper person for that board or commission, because we could very well use personality as part of it. Now, I don't think that bothers you, and that's great, but I think we need to do what's for the majority of people, and, and I just don't, I don't agree that that's, I don't agree that that fits for the majority of people. I, I, I see your point entirely, but I, I'm just arguing that that's, that a lot of people are saying, I'm throwing my ring and hat for Animal Services Advisory Board, and so it doesn't matter what's on the internet now. I don't care what's talked about me on the flyer, I could care less. People, I just don't think a lot of people are that way in this town. I'm arguing with you, because I think you're great at what you do, and you don't care, but I think a lot of people would.
Well, I think you, one, it's not that I don't care. I can assure you that standing up on stage and talking in front of a bunch of people, though it may be my job and I'm an attorney, I'm trained to do that, it certainly is not my ideal role. I'm actually very much an introvert, and I am sitting in my office at my desk most of the time. But I disagree, I think that this is, one, the Alderman, Mr. Kenyon, Ms. Gray, Ron Adams, as you all know, you guys ask great questions. You're not asking personal questions, at least things that I deem personal questions. You're asking me how I would view an issue, what are, what's important to me about, why am I there? Those are questions that the citizens want to know. Why is that person wanting to be my planning commissioner? Why is that person wanting to be on board? Those are things that I, as a citizen, would like to know about my planning commissioner, what, what's their motivation for being there? And when you put a cloud over there, say, no, you don't get to know that, you just get to know that we decided they were the best. And so, I mean, four people get to decide that they're the best without me having the opportunity to view it. But you also, there, the problem is that you, the other point, which is, we're saying that there are already open meetings. Anybody can go there. So that means that all these personal questions that you're asking are already done in a public forum. We're just saying that it needs to be a public forum that's available to the public, and that, to the, all the public, if they want to view it. And so, since they're already open, it's a moot point. They're already open. That room could be full of a hundred people if they could fit them in there. So this really doesn't change the, the, the real issue, which is, it's already public. We're just saying, do we take it to the next level like the rest of the city government, or we do, we give this one area special privilege? And that's what you've created, is a special privilege, and said, this area, we don't want you all to know about unless you show up. Well, I can tell you right now, if I'm a person with a disability, I'm gonna have a problem with that, because I don't have to show up to come here, but I'll have to show up to go to those meetings. And I think I don't have to show up to go to the planning commission, because I can watch those on TV, but I'm gonna have to show up to see how come that planning commissioner got the job. I won't get to see the whole pool that was out there. And to also show the transparency of government to see that when you all made those decisions to nominate those people, that they truly were the best, because I believe that when you've made your decisions, that you have in your heart voted for who you believe to be the best people to have that job. And you cloud it up by saying, we don't want you to know about it. And that's what you're doing, you're saying, we don't want you to know about it, and we're gonna cloud that area up, when in fact, let's shine light on it, you guys are making wise decisions, and you're appointing people that are qualified and good, and you're not asking any embarrassing questions, and this is not, and this is something that is public and is not in the private domain.
Mark.
I want to make some points very clear here. First of all, I'm for open government, and I'm for transparency, and I'm probably not going to support this. But to say that we, and I'm on the committee, so yes, I take this kind of a personal front, to say that we in some way have not published when we have our meetings is an error. It's always on the public calendar, is that right, Lisa? The press is always notified, all the applicants are contacted the best we can, is that right, Lisa? I believe you're the one that has to do this. We have an open committee. We have open government. Our experience is to be open and to be honest and to be transparent, and that's my experience on this for the past three years. So there are some, some inaccuracies in what maybe I heard, that we're sneaking around trying to get people on committees, because that is not the fact. And so that's why I wanted to say that. I do believe in open government. This is a big paradigm shift. It's hard for the committee members to, to understand the reason for it, because it worked so well for, for so long. It is a paradigm shift. I do think, and I, I might put Ms. Kill the on the spot here, she came in and interviewed, and she's been sitting here for, oh, about three hours, and she was the very first person since I've been on the committee that we had to say, are you aware that we're filming this? And I think that it might have, might have made her a little bit surprised and uncomfortable, because it's a paradigm shift. So yes, it's gonna take a while for us to get used to this, but to, to say that there is a legacy of something going on here is not a fact. It has always been open, it is, and we have had people come in, and I've had other people that told me that they had come in before and, and watched them. And we, we encourage that. So it's okay with me that, that we film them, but I will tell you upfront, it is going to be a paradigm shift, it is going to make some people uncomfortable. That's, that's what a government is. You put yourself out there, you're in a fishbowl, and that's open and that's transparent, and heaven knows, we're all faced with it. So I, I'm for that. I think that's absolutely right, and it's no different than a government hearing where you are coming in and you're telling it like it is, you know? So on a personal basis, it is so tough for me to see this paradigm shift, because I do know individuals, and we all know individuals, that are going to be very uncomfortable about being in the hot seat. We are, we do ask direct questions. We like open and honest answers and full answers, and we have great applicants. In fact, we have so many good applicants, at the end of every meeting, we think, oh my goodness, what are we going to do here? We do have open discussion. But this paradigm shift is, is tough. And I don't want any accusations cast on the committee that I've worked with on the past several years, because it has been open, and it has been in earnest, and it has been published, and people do know the times that we're meeting. And I guess, you know, moving forward, we will probably be broadcast if it passes, and that's the right thing, probably, but it is going to change. It is going to be a big change in the applicant pool and the comfort level that applicants have for applying to committees. And so we just need to be prepared for that, and I guess we can evaluate it in the future to see how that impacts the committee activity. I think that we have some really good members on committees that are not comfortable being in the hot seat, that it's going to be asked direct questions, one-on-one, in a committee, and it's going to make people think otherwise before they apply. And I hope, in all earnestly, really, if we have it open and people view them, that they're going to take it as an educational opportunity to see maybe what it is we talk about and what we're looking for in the future. But I absolutely will not sit here and have an accusation cast upon the committee, because it has been open, it has been published, and it has been open to everyone since I've been on it. Thank you.
Okay, Adele.
And one other inaccuracy that I have to clear up is that there is follow-up. There's considerable follow-up for those people who aren't chosen. Every time someone is interviewed, when they leave the room, we say, please, if you're not chosen this time, please apply again. We have a lot of wonderful candidates, and we hope that you'll apply again. But once again, Lisa, in the clerk's office sends a letter to those people who are not accepted or who are accepted, right, Lisa? Both, both, they get a letter. So it's not like they never hear another word from us. That does happen. I, I take issue with this thing that we're all of a sudden closing something. It's never been filmed. I talked to Kyle Cook today, former chair and former Alderman. He said it had never been filmed, and he never wanted it filmed. He did not even want the door open. I talked to Brenda Boudreau. She was very much against the filming. It has never been filmed. Our chief of staff, Don Mar, was on that committee. It was never filmed. So let's clarify something. We're not taking an action to change something. I've been on this board seven and three-quarters years. Never one time has my transparency been questioned. I am all about transparency, but first and foremost, I'm about meeting the needs of citizens. I've had a handful, a whole bunch of citizens tell me this week, they won't be applying if it's videoed. Absolutely, I will not apply if it's videoed, is what they've told me. So it is going to be a big disincentive. And right now, we already have, even though we have a lot of wonderful applicants for some positions, we have other positions that we can never get an applicant for. So it's going to be a disincentive to our, to our citizens and to the work of our city, where as, as Mark has said, we want, we want citizens engaged, and that's the good thing about it. So I... So I have several points that I want to make, but the biggest one is that I want to clarify that we're not changing. Yes.
Adella, do you have questions for Stephen?
No, I don't.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're off the hot seat now.
All right, thank you very much.
Go on, Adella.
Yes, of course, I want to make, I want to make this point again and again, that we're not taking action to do something that's always been done. The committee has never been filmed. I think that, you know, we need to remember, we have a published, public list of meetings that go out every week. And the nomination committee interviews are always on there, what time they're happening, when they're happening. It's also in the newspaper. So, you know, man, I take huge issue with the fact that we're trying to cover up something and do something that we don't want people to know. I agree with Alderman Tennant. I feel like it is very similar to an interview for a paid position. Very similar. And the only thing is that we cannot go into executive committee. I had one person that said, who was very upset at the thought of interviewing on a video, being interviewed, because they said, I was not accepted, and it was very hurtful to me. And the thought that it was gonna be on channel 216 for the whole community to see for a long time. He said, I will never consider applying again. So I think we have a lot of information here. I feel very strongly that this is the wrong action to suddenly, suddenly start videoing these committee meetings. Thank you.
Does anyone have a public comment tonight?
My name is Laura Keoldy.
Would you pull it up? I can't, I'm having difficulty hearing.
There you go.
My name is Laura Keoldy, and I recently went through the interview process, and I believe I'm the person, you're talking, one of the people who expressed discomfort.
You were the first person filmed.
Hooray. Trailblazer.
I can put that on my resume now. And I, you know, it was, I was a little uncomfortable. I'm not used to speaking publicly, being filmed, whatever. And I, but I think it's actually different, being in an interview situation and being filmed is different than being on a commission and being filmed, because it is about me and just me. And I would, you know, it makes sense to me that there would be paper documentation about it or... But I don't think it's essential to people that my personal interview be filmed. I understand the argument that, you know, if I were applying for city council or planning commission, you would want to know really what I thought. But at the same time, if that could be made available in a different place, that would be good. But I think, I do think that discomfort with being interviewed is different from having a discomfort at being filmed as a, on a commission.
So you're not for it, you would rather it not be filmed? And coming from the point of view, or do you think?
Yeah, I would rather not be filmed. I don't think it's that, it's not that big of a deal to me. I mean, it would be, I mean, for transparency, I understand, that would be fine. But as a person who was applying and other people, other people like me, it would be better not to film specifically the individual interviews. And it does feel to me like it's a little more personal than being on a commission and talking about historic district issues. You know, it's about, the interview process felt more personal in an unnecessary way.
We were personal, weren't we?
Oh, yeah. No, it wasn't, I mean, I don't know. That's, I just...
So you're saying that made you feel uncomfortable?
I felt uncomfortable being interviewed on video, yes. You know, I don't, apparently, there are a lot of people like me. But I don't feel uncomfortable about the idea of being on a commission and being filmed, because I think that has more, is more about things that the community needs. It's more directly in the interest of the community.
Yes.
Hello. Were you asked any personal questions about your family, your favorite color, anything?
No.
Do you mind?
No, it was more, but it was, it was about, you know, my personal interests and...
So you say all the questions you asked were relevant to the position that you were applying for?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Could I ask a question?
Yes, well.
Since it was videoed, I'm not gonna call you out on something that won't be blasted on television now, I guess. But I remember what you did when Alderman Gray said, this is being recorded. You said, you went, ooh, am I dressed? You did something like this.
I don't remember.
Your hair or something. And so, no personal questions were asked, perhaps? But I sensed that, I think some of us said, I don't remember. I have to go back and look at the video now to be sure I don't misspeak about what we said or did. But I think some of us said, you're fine, you look great. I think I might have said, you look beautiful or something, I don't know. But that was, that was something that has disturbed me about this whole issue, too, is that there are some unintended consequences, I think, of walking in. But that's all I have to say for you. I have some more comments to make to the council, but I hope you don't mind me saying that. But I thought it was kind of interesting that you did that, and I think that was where you started being uncomfortable. You started thinking about your being blasted on television and how you looked at that time. So to Alderman Petty's point, no personal questions, perhaps? But some personal awareness of, that's different when you're being videoed than when you're not, for us.
Well, that was me kind of being silly also.
You were great. You did a great job. Thank you.
One more question. Are you certain none of the other interviewees were asked personal questions?
I had my interview, and then I left the building. I have no idea what would have happened.
Can I ask you a hypothetical question, then?
Sure.
If someone was selected for your position, and then at a later date, it was revealed that there was an incidence of corruption, would you like to know if anything was revealed in that interview?
Yes, and that's why I think it makes sense to have it recorded, you know, paper, paper analog. And I, you know, I don't think it's that, I'm not super intense about my position. I just wanted to say, Adella was right when she said people are uncomfortable. But, yeah, I don't, you know.
Yes.
If you had known in advance that it was going to be recorded, would that have changed? Would you have applied or not applied? Or would you have gone in just expecting to be filmed and been okay with it?
Actually, that's a good question, because I actually did not know. I walked in and was told it's gonna be filmed. And just, I'm a person who reverts to humor and silliness. I can be slightly uncomfortable, but yes, if I had known in advance, it would have been, it would have been better.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Okay, any other public comment? Right, I'm bringing back counsel.
Don or Ethan?
I think we've got a faithful citizen up here.
I'm sorry.
I do want to comment as a Ward Four representative, or Ward Four resident, not as your chief of staff, which is why I'm not up there. And I want to address a couple of things, because I want to represent, I think, some of what Adella talked about with former council members who've sat in your seat before. I was actually the nominating chair for five years of my term on the council. We had open nominating committee meetings every time. In fact, in numerous occasions, we would have the entire library board or the airport board sit in and listen to interviews of candidates that we were considering that would be sharing peer seats with them. I'm having this conversation, it's really interesting to me, because, one, one of the people I respect the most and thinks one of the smartest people in the world is Steve Smith. And he and I both worked with Mayor Jordan on his campaign. So this is, I think, a good example. I'm not the wife of Carville, but I'm another opinion of a household, I guess, maybe, that feels differently. And I don't feel that the process is flawed. And I don't think it's flawed, because I think when you look at the history in the city manager and council form of government, the mayor and council form of government under Hannah, under Cootie, and under Jordan, I'm not aware of a single appointment that's been challenged for a corrupt appointment. I'm not aware of citizens who the council didn't feel was the best opportunity to serve on the committees. I interviewed, my very first job was for a planning commissioner. And I was actually selected as the first planning commissioner to, I guess, be appointed over a planning commissioner who was up for reappointment, who had traditionally always been reappointed. And I actually did it for practice, because I didn't think I had any chance, because I thought the person would just be reappointed. And I was appointed. I was the first commissioner to have an article written about him, which was maybe foresight of how difficult my political career would actually be, about why I was picked over someone who was seated there. I think those were intense discussions about people that the council at the time was deciding whether the commissioners were aligned with their viewpoints, looking for, I think, at the point, moderates. They had people on each end and looking for people to maybe be in the middle. And I remember being interviewed by Heather Daniels, Trent Trumbo, and Cyrus Young in a committee room on second floor, which is now the audit room, which is your break room. It wasn't filmed, but I, too, was asked some very intense questions about my viewpoints on development that, when I left, I thought, hmm, I'm in the staffing business. Some of these people developing are clients of our company. I'm glad they didn't necessarily hear my personal viewpoints, whether it would impact my employer or whether it would impact my job. I was high enough that I had a bit of a comfort in the organization about that, but I can see where it would be more intimidating to someone who did not have that protection. When I was a chair of the nominating committee, we had this discussion about filming, because we have, as all, I think, council members do, you want to be open. You don't want to have, you have people who get mad at you when they don't get appointed, who want to know why they didn't, and you try to explain it. But I remember a story in our deliberation about a person who lived in South Fayetteville, who was more of a, what I would call, a factory worker. Someone who talked about, with a particular alderman happened to bring to this discussion. They would have been uncomfortable applying, because they didn't want to be judged about what they wore or where they worked. That wasn't the council bringing that on to the person. That's that person's own projection about how they might be perceived by people watching them and not knowing them in any level of detail, other than a snippet. And that made me think about things like, would that, would it deter people? I can't say that it would, because we never had filmed it. But I wouldn't want someone to not apply for a lack of confidence to get through that. You build that confidence through these opportunities. It's one of the things I see in HR, as people get better and better at interviewing. They get more confident to do it. I'd hate for someone to never try. I think it has unintended consequences. That's my concern. It's not about you, the elected official. You should be able to be willing to be filmed. Anything you say, anything you write, any meeting you're at, you signed up for it. But to me, the unintended consequence is the person you don't select. It's the person who goes through the process that has their life put on the table that you might not pick. There was an interview that the council had on a lack of an appointment on the Walton Arts Center council. And the deciding factor of that appointment was the person's answer about where they thought the new Walton Arts Center facility should be built. And their answer was Bentonville. The council didn't choose that person. But I think the challenge would be, for that person, do they go to dinner and get accosted by people in the community because they said Bentonville, what they really believed and thought, even though they weren't selected? I think it has a consequence that is something that should be considered. Now, is it an open meeting? It is an open meeting. Can someone come in and film it from public access? Absolutely. Can someone sit in and attend it? They have historically. But I think people have respected it for the process, which is why you haven't seen those things. There's a bit of respect for the privacy of the discussion. I don't think it's going backwards. We don't do it today. We're not moving backwards. I think it's about the risk of the applicant, not the elected official. And I guess that's the point I would make about this. It's the unintended consequence, the potential impact on a job, a client they might be selling to, because their view is too liberal or too conservative. It's their personal life outside of their work life, which might be the avenue by which they deal with a more conservative or a more liberal employer. It's not for the person you select. It's for the person you don't select, that I think has applicant risk. And I think the point of, you know, disabled people or Title VI-protected people having to come to the city to participate, to participate in government, you have to do that today. To observe it, you might not have to. But to provide input, advise, testify, you have to be here. It's why we're Title VI compliant. It's why we want to be. And we're talking not about openness, but broadcasting. And to me, that's this discussion, not whether the meeting is open, but whether you decide to broadcast the meeting. But the main point I want to make is, it's applicant risk, not elected official risk. And it's not appointment risk, it's the person you don't select risk.
I have a question.
Yes, Don.
Don. You said, the point is being here for the meetings, because applicants have to be able to come to meetings. You said, because we're Title VI compliant.
I'm saying, when someone says that, that a person, a disabled person, which I'm not aware of any complaint of someone wanting to participate, they haven't been able to. But if they were going to come to the city council meeting tonight to speak on this, they wouldn't be able to do it by viewing a broadcast. They would have to participate and attend this meeting to actually be a participant under our current technology and use of the meeting.
My question for you, though, isn't the purpose of this, though, videoing it, isn't the purpose of that so that people can watch it at home as if they were able to be here to watch it?
Yes, I think that would be why you would want to do it.
That was my question. Thank you.
Okay, any other public comment? All right, I'm bringing back to the council. What discussions do we have amongst the council? Okay. I'll take it, and I don't care. Matthew, he hasn't spoken.
Thank you, Mayor. Try to hit a couple of points. First, I'll say no evidence. The fact that there isn't any evidence of past corruption doesn't, isn't any proof that there's not gonna be corruption in the future. that there's not going to be corruption in the future. And that's what policies are about. It's not about us, it's about future-proofing our community. And it may not be a step backwards, but it's certainly irrefutable to step forwards. I don't think Fayetteville wants to be a community that's cemented in place. I'm glad to hear that, and I would have never expected it, but I'm glad to confirm that the nominating committee doesn't make these things personal. Because I think that applicants, their expectation of privacy with respect to their qualifications and their opinions, which are relevant to their, the position they're applying for, they lose that expectation. And they should retain their expectation of privacy for everything else is personal. And God forbid, we choose somebody over somebody else because we heard something about them or don't like their family or they're going to go on maternity leave. That's the worst possible scenario. And I don't think that happens, but it doesn't matter that I don't think it. And this is, I think, the broader point. It does not matter what our intentions are. That's the number-one rule of public perception. It matters what the public perceives. And, you know, all of us are fairly well-educated, and if you want to see the research, I've done it. People don't trust governments that don't make a good faith effort to involve them. They don't, at all. And if we're saying the statutory minimum of an open meeting is good enough, we need to say what that really means, that a token gesture to public participation is good enough for Fayetteville. And the public, they will perceive that as something worthy of their mistrust. It does not matter what our intentions are. It's the very first rule of governance. Respectfully, Alderman Tennant said earlier that we could very well use personality as a part of our decisions. And I know he was being facetious. But, you know, if the cameras are on, you can't, at least not without being skewered. And you should be if you do. If the cameras are off, well, I choose to trust you, but I know plenty of citizens out there won't. And, you know, I appreciate that applicants and people who want to serve should be able to make it to meetings. But you know what? People should be able to comment on a selection and make an informed comment, not just a comment based on their personal relationship with someone. They should be able to talk to me. I'm not on the nominating committee. But if somebody wants to send me a comment about a nomination we're about to make, I sure would appreciate it being informed. I'd like to be able to check it out. You know, I think that, for me, this comes down to the letter of the law versus the spirit of the law. And the spirit of the Freedom of Information Act is abundantly clear. It's not about meeting statutory minimums. It's about making information not merely available, but accessible. And so I think we need to ask ourselves, what kind of city do we want to be? Do we want to be one that refuses to step forward just because it's not a step backwards? Or do we want to be one that embraces it and takes that step, even if it means we have to be brave about it?
Mr.?
Well, just a follow-up on that. Even though our boards and committees are strictly advisory, I place a lot of value on a committee's recommendations. So even if indirectly, these committee members are still crafting and influencing public policy. And as such, I believe that the public deserves to be included on the interview process of these individuals that are crafting their policies. The public has a right to know the qualifications of these board and committee members. And as a committee chair, I'd like to know who, what applicants we're interviewing for my committee and understand how they responded in the interviews and know why they were chosen. And as a member of a board or committee, you will be talked about in the media, and you must be held accountable for your decisions and recommendations. So if you're uncomfortable on camera or engaging with citizens about public business, then serving on a board or committee is probably not the best thing for you. But the other thing we should remember is that we're in government in Arkansas, a place that has a very poor reputation for bathroom deals and the Good Old Boy Network. And so I think the impetus is on us to show transparency and to demonstrate that at the city of Fayetteville, we make appointments based on merit, not personal relationships or other inappropriate criteria. And I think that the nominating committee should welcome the daylight being shown on this process to prove that we are impartial and that we do have the public's best interest in mind in these appointments. So I'm going to stand with transparency and oppose this resolution.
Okay.
My turn?
Yeah, your turn.
I'd like to expand on something that Alderman Petty said. I will make this statement because I think I'm correct in saying that I think I have hired many, many, many more people in my life than you have. And it's nothing against that. Some of these people make multimillion-dollar decisions for my company, and I owe it to my company in that interview to absolutely, as part of the decision, will that person fit in with the team that they're about to join? And I do it on the committee as well. And I owe it to the citizens to do it, to the committee, on the committee. Because I, I have to say, okay, we've got a good historic district commission, and we've got one applicant, or we've got one spot open and five people. We don't want somebody to join that commission that all they're going to do is drown it down into some inefficient, worthless committee who never gets anything done. That doesn't serve the purpose of anybody in the city. And if that happens to be a personality problem, it's a personality problem. Now, if their ability overrides everybody else on the commission and we say, my God, that person's an expert and they've absolutely got to do it regardless of how they're going to drag that thing into the mud, then that's a decision-making process, too. But it's all a factor. And to not think that that's a factor is ridiculous, in my opinion. And I wouldn't have a huge problem with filming the interviews as much as I have a problem with filming the discussion of the people themselves, of who's going to get on the committees and who's not. Because I think that's when you're making the personal statements that could be misunderstood. Those are going to be filmed and archived forever. And some kid gets mad at Fritz in the video center one day and says, I'm quitting today, but you know what? Before I leave the building, I'm going to put together a gag reel of all the funny things that have happened in the committee meeting interview sessions and put them out there on YouTube. That'll make all those people really glad that they filled out that application. Look, I believe we're so hypersensitive on this council. I think we've just gotten worse over the last year. We look at words and we look at things like feed the hungry, stop global warming, promote world peace, end racism, open government. I think we sometimes appear doubt, and I'm guilty, I doubt what I say sometimes up here because I think, even though I know it's right, I can't be risked, you can't risk up here being looked at by the community of not believing in one of those things that I just said, even if it doesn't make sense. The fact is, all these things work when they help the greater good. The needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few for you Star Trek people out there like me that I remember when that was spoken, and it's still true today. I know you like Star Trek. I believe in those things. But one problem I have with this is when people use the umbrella of open government to bring what I think is more of a personal issue here to bear. I have a problem with that. Don't know if it's absolutely true, but it sounds like it may be. And I think that's wrong to use important words like open government to push a personal issue. I have a real problem with that. It has to help the majority of our citizens. Now, aldermen who choose to run for government, we should expect cameras in our face. Absolutely. But everyday citizens should not. And Professor Smith's idea that it's somehow the same and makes it okay that you're going to be filmed on the Animal Services Advisory Board, so what's the difference? I've watched some of those Animal Services Advisory Board, and they've never had a personal conversation come up about somebody on the advisory board?
Yeah, they have.
Well, that, okay, they have? But they shouldn't, in the interview process, this shouldn't go to a personal level. I support Alderman Gray's proposal to exclude filming the nomination committee. If we film these meetings, we're going to damage Fayetteville's citizens while satisfying a select few, and I agree with that. I believe our applications will decline significantly. Now, if I thought there were a whole bunch of people like Stephen who were not afraid to stand up in front of the camera, who were not afraid to say what's really on their mind and not afraid of anything, then maybe I'd support filming it all. But the fact is, there's not that many of him. And there's certainly not that many that are going to take the time to give their time to the city. We don't have enough people applying as it is. And so now we're going to exclude an entire group of people who may be very well-qualified to help their city. All they want to do is help their city, but we're going to say, oh, guess what? Now you have to go through this. Let's add a hoop to a process that, by the way, has worked great for 50 years, but I guess that doesn't matter. We go beyond what we have to do already. We publish the people's applications if they want to see them. You can go sit in the back of that room. There's a huge difference between someone sitting in the room and going outside and going, you know what I just heard? I heard this, this, and this. By the time that story gets around for a day, it'll be completely different anyway. It's just like the elementary school thing. But if it's on film, then somebody can watch it over and over and over. And if they're misunderstanding something, it'll just keep edging at them over and over and over. And so the state doesn't do this. Apply for a state commission and see if that's an, see if there's an interview. The conversations you have with the governor's staff, with the executive committee, those aren't filmed, they're not public knowledge, because they shouldn't be. I believe that one of the main reasons a lot of people are bothered by our government is because we all have this, well, we don't all, but there's this zest to include everybody and this passion to make everybody happy. And so we sacrifice the efficiency and productivity of government in the name of open government. And I agree, it's ironic, but it's true. We don't film our job applicants on city positions. And I've gone through hours of HR training on why you don't do that, what you can and can't write down on a piece of paper in a job interview because it can be misconstrued later is a problem. But we want to throw all that away because somehow this is either more important or the people are less important to treat with the same amount of respect? That's the message this sends to people, in my opinion. Our planning commission gets paid, and some people apply for a planning commission and, let's say, town and gal. Well, I firmly believe that if we pay somebody, I don't care if it's a dollar, a thousand dollars, or a million dollars, we should not film them. So now we're going to sit there maybe and say, okay, you can talk about the other application, but the second you mention planning commission, we're going to ask for the camera to turn off because that's, I mean, we think that's efficient. We think that, that's going to make things better. If we start filming these committee meetings, I will consider resigning from that committee because it is absolutely the wrong thing for us to do. We owe it to our citizens to give them as much empowerment to help their city as possible, and this does the opposite. Let's make sure we're not just grabbing at a cause which sounds good when it does more harm to the most people than good to the few. I'm really surprised that any committee members that sit in there with me would want these things filmed, certainly the discussion afterwards filmed. So I would hope that at least the committee members will join me on this thing and say, we absolutely shouldn't film this one. Thank you.
Okay.
Well, first, we're not excluding anyone. We're not excluding anyone. There's just going to, there's just a camera in the room now. And for the first time, I think, in history, Matthew, I agree with everything you said.
And then you move.
And Sarah, you too. I mean, I think we should record every single thing in those committees. Valuable, valuable decisions are made in that room. Four city council members behind closed doors making decisions on who's appointed to boards and commissions that make policy decisions for the city of Fayetteville. And we use our boards and commissions. That is where the groundwork starts for policy decisions in Fayetteville, and we value that. Either we value it or we don't.
And you don't think this waters down those commissions?
No. And if we do value that, then we need transparency there. And...
All this does is it will water down the amount of people that apply, which means there'll be less qualified, talented people on these commissions, which means they'll be worse, which means everybody is going to be affected negatively. Thank you. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I just, I have a question. I guess I'll ask for the chair of the committee, Alderman Gray. If I'm unable to attend a nominating committee meeting, how do I know how to vote?
Pardon? If, oh, if you're on the...
If I'm unable to attend a nominating committee meeting, how do I know how to vote?
As a committee member?
As a city council member. How do I know how to vote to approve y'all's recommendation?
Oh.
Right, but with other boards and commissions, you know, like Water and Sewer, I watch a street committee, you can watch it, Equipment, I can watch it, nominate. How do I know? That's just a question I haven't thought of before, but I'm thinking of it now. How do I know how to vote?
I guess, I think what you have to have is what I have, and that is faith in the committee. When environmental action brings something forward, I know they've worked on it hard, I know they've vetted it here and there, they've done, so I have faith. I don't question everything they bring forward just because I was not able to sit there and listen to them. So I guess I would ask Alderman that you have faith in our decision. That's, or attend, whichever you prefer.
Okay. And how, how many times do they interview each year?
We, four times. And we have, we have, we interview four times a year, and we have lots and lots of applicants. So a lot of times, we're here till 11 o'clock at night. We may start at four in the afternoon.
Okay. That's just what I was wondering, that was the question that just popped up in my mind, is how do I know how to vote? And so I guess I still don't have an answer.
I guess I can't vote on anything Animal Services unless I go watch the Animal Services Board. To take that attitude means we have to go watch every board meeting before we know how to vote. I can't trust a...
We have to have faith in each other.
Okay, y'all, let's all just ratchet down a little bit. Al, it's your turn.
Thank you. I, I'm going to make it short because this whole, this is kind of one of the most insulting things on the council I've had. There's been one other one, again, involving maybe the same people, but this personal issue that we're seeing here, that one person could keep us here for three hours with accusations that something's going wrong, is very insulting to me. I don't care if the things are videoed or not, I don't care if they blast them all over TV. It's apparent to me that we don't have a lot of people even running for city council. How many of us were unopposed? Because it's hard to get people, good people, to get involved in government, and it's this very thing right here that causes people not to be, that we could be held, held to some, that one person can come in and make, make people doubt our work and our integrity. And it's, it's amazing to me that this happens. But if every time one person comes up here and decides that we need to change the way we do things and accuses us of not doing something right or not doing something in the sunshine, we're going to be up here, many of us probably wouldn't run again if it means coming up here till 11 o'clock at night because one person has some bone to pick with us on our work on the committee. To me, when we vote on something for the, for the city of Fayetteville, when we make a vote, we're voting on stewardship, it's public dollars and council energy. We don't have enough time, maybe you all do, I don't have enough time to spend hours and hours and hours on one person's. We've had one person come to the microphone tonight as a citizen, and I guess, too, that would be Dr. Smith, too, to say that we should do this. I guess I think we, maybe we ought to just table this, invite the public to come back up here, and let's just get as many people as we can, because do you all know what the public wants? Every person that I've asked has said they don't want it videoed. We've got two people here who do, who count. We, I haven't had a chance to ask everybody on Word Four what they want, send out a message on the list, sir. The people that I've asked, every single one of them, not one has said... The people that I've asked, every single one of them, not one has said they wish that we would video these things. When we look back for years, and, for years past, no one. Dr. Smith, I guess four times, we didn't get, said he didn't get on. Did you ever ask for, for the film, for filming? We know that one person here speaking for videoing asked after he didn't get on a few times. So there's no way to make this not, we, we need, maybe we need more public input on this issue before we make a decision that would cause, I know we have a motion on the floor in a second, but I don't know. I, I don't know that we have enough information here. Do you all have enough information? Have you talked to enough people to find out what citizens want? Our job is to do what the public wants. The public, the public. And to, to, to have, to make, to be good stewards of public dollars and to use our energies in the best, most efficient way we can for our city. And, and if I don't know how to vote on an issue, if I haven't watched the video, I, I don't even, I don't know how, I don't have enough hours in the day to watch every video so that I'll know how to vote. How would I do that? Is that what we're talking about here? That we all are supposed to watch every committee meeting on video so we'll know how to vote? I, I don't, I don't, I don't even... So I know there's a motion on the floor, but maybe I'll...
You can, if you wish, make a motion to table the motion on, on the floor. The nominating committee, I do not believe, is going to have another meeting anytime real soon. Is that...
I'll make a motion because I think we need more public input than what we've heard here tonight to table this and ask for more public input from our citizens.
Do you have, are you making a motion to table it to a certain time?
I'll make a motion to table it to our next meeting to give our citizens a chance to weigh in on this issue.
I'll second that.
That's, can we say a month? I won't be here at the next meeting.
A month. I will amend my motion for any amendment to give this a month.
I will amend my second.
Thank you.
Mayor, there are a few, a few things, a few points I do need to make in response. We have large, large numbers of applicants. And so for an Alderman to say, people don't trust government, I think we have large numbers of citizens who do trust government. They want to be a part of it. And they trust that when we ask them to come up for an interview, the right person is going to be chosen. To clarify the point about if a person is disabled and cannot get here, we do phone interviews. Lisa can tell you, there's been six or 10 over the last year that we've had to do on the phone, and we were happy to do that because a person was out of town or whatever. So it's not like we're automatically excluding someone. They have a chance to have a phone interview.
We call them if they forget to come.
Yes. We even call them if they forget and remind them. That's right. And I think the point has already been made well by Ms. Gioli that it's quite different to be sitting on a committee than it is to be in an interview. And I think that's very clear.
Ms. Mark.
I want to speak to the amendment. I don't mind that it, that we wait. This is going to make me unpopular with my colleagues on the committee. It's interesting to point out that most of the arguments to film this are from the individuals that are not on the committee because we know what we have experienced. I'm actually not going to support this because it's the right thing to have open government and transparency. I know that. I know I'm not going to. And it breaks my heart on a personal level, but I've got to take that personal suffrage, and it is, because I am empathetic with the person in the hot seat. I'm so empathetic, I could, it's heartbreaking to me right now. But I do know sometimes I have to take my personal emotion out of the argument and look at what I think we have to do. And as I mentioned before, it is a paradigm shift. It's going to have unintentional consequences. We don't know what those consequences are until we go forward. But I do believe in open government unequivocally. It's, it is so tough for me to sit here knowing that, what I know by being experienced on this committee, to say this. And the respect I have for my colleagues that I've served with on this committee over the year because they are individuals of the highest integrity and they have absolutely, there's absolutely no reason for a pall of suspect to be cast over this committee or any of my colleagues that I've served with. But I also will tell you, I believe in open government and transparency. And after a great deal of thought, and a great deal of thought on political policy, on government, on freedom of information, on boards that I've been in that have been in a little bit of trouble, not be, primarily before I was on the board, I'm not going to say the board, that you, you must be open and you must do what you can to allow the, the community as a whole to know how government activity. And so at this point, and I think, I openly apologize to my colleagues because I don't want you to be offended, but it's a personal evaluation of the political process and the opportunity to be open that I probably would not be able to support this amendment. Although I do support the intent of the amendment, I can't support it because I believe in open government.
Ms. Mayor.
Well, right now, we have a motion and second to table it for.
I withdraw my second.
Okay. So...
Second for what? The tabling?
Yes.
That's till October the first, which is the first meeting in October, two meetings from tonight.
Well, I don't think we should table it. I think at least seven of us have very strong opinions on this that aren't likely to change. And I just add one more viewpoint. Imagine you're the target of a smear campaign or you were accused of something improper. How much easier would it be to refute in a quick and absolute sense with raw footage?
Well, any other comments on the tabling? We have a motion and a second, yes?
No matter how I feel about it, usually if an Alderman wants to table something, I tend to support that. So regardless if I'm ready to vote right now, I think it never hurts to get more public input. And if you think we need more public input, I'll go gather public input as well, and we'll come back. So I'll vote to table it. It's fine.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion on that? Lisa, would you please call a row on the table?
Kenyon?
No.
Petty?
No.
Tinnott?
Yes.
Schottmeyer?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Long?
No.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
No.
Okay, I'm going to give it a vote, so we're going to table it for a month.
Okay.
All right. What announcements do we have?
We still love one another?
Yes, we did. We did. We had some of this discussion. There is a recycling day at Arvest Park for electronics. I can't remember the date though.
Give me one second, I have a lot here. Apologize.
Because I, this is an important event. It's the 20th, maybe 20th, 19th, 20th, and 21st.
My fast, speedy computer. We've got several announcements. First, our ward cleanups for the fall start. The very first one will be this Saturday, the 7th of September, in the Ward One areas that will be at Shaver Foods parking lot, which at 1367 South Beechwood, behind the Randall Tyson Track Complex, and the Solid Waste Recycling Facility at 1560 South Happy Hollow Road. The hours of that are 7:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Other dates, just for planning purposes, there'll be a cleanup on Saturday, October the 5th, in Ward Four locations, Al Creek School and Holcomb Elementary. October the 26th, so you can clean out pre-Halloween, at Elks Lodge or Vandergriff Elementary. And then the last cleanup for the fall will be November the 9th at Woodland Junior High School and the Church of Christ parking lot in the Ward Two locations. We also have a free electronics recycling event in Northwest Arkansas coming up. The dates on that, the business drop-off day, this will be at Arvest Ballpark, and it'll be the south entrance off of 56th Street there in Springdale. The business drop-off day is Thursday, September the 19th, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And then the residential drop-off days are Friday, September the 20th, from 10:00 to 4:00, and Saturday, September the 21st, from 9:00 AM until 12:00 noon. The items that'll be taken at that cleanup are computers, printers, faxes, copiers, phones, stereos, TVs, electronic cables, paper shredders, microwaves, DVR, VCR players, video game consoles, satellite receivers, iPods, and PDAs. So if you've been looking for a way to get rid of those items, it's a cleanup. Also, we'll remind Fayetteville citizens that you can get coupons for discarding electronic products at no charge on any date through the remainder of the year, December 31st. Each council member had coupons, as well as at the mayor's table at the farmer's market, here at City Hall and various locations. They're also at the Washington County Operations and Maintenance Center where electronics are actually taken for disposal. The hours of that are Monday through Friday from 8:00 to 4:00, and the first Saturday of each month from 8:00 AM to 12:00 noon. We have first Thursday, this Thursday, September the 5th, on the downtown square, starts at 5:00 PM. We also want to remind citizens that the Walton Art Center is currently seeking proposals for visual and performing artists as a part of their 2014 Artist Sphere. They're looking for artists who can successfully link art and nature and environment together. Those proposals are taken September, I'm sorry, November 1st is the deadline, and decisions will be made for those grants of artist selections by December 1st. So for our creative community, we want to encourage them to participate in that. And then just for calendar planning, Bikes Blues and Barbecue happens in the city of Fayetteville beginning September the 18th through the 22nd. That's a Wednesday through the Sunday, the 22nd.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Thank you, Alderman.